Where are we? Okay, so the first thing is apologies. I don't have any apologies and everyone's here, that's good. Oh, okay. Well, we're gonna adjourn. So I'm gonna say that we're going to adjourn the meeting between eleven and eleven thirty and that's because we're going to be rededicating a camellia room, which was a feature of the previous council building, the civic building in Chooam Street. And we are now going to have a camellia room here to honour those early pioneers, women who were elected to council. And of course Ada Wells was the first woman elected and it was her anniversary of the election on the... wasn't the election, it must have been when she was elected to... day? So it was on Anzac Day? Yeah. Oh, yes, of course. So it was the first, it was the first Anzac Day. Yeah, no, no, that's right. So yeah, so it was the centenary of her election on the 25th of April. And so, and so we have her grandson, her ninety-year-old grandson is coming for the dedication ceremony and some of the family, of Bruce Carey's family. So it's, I think it's just wonderful that we've got a grandson coming to... Just here on the second floor, so the lovely glass one. And if you, you may not have noticed, but it actually now has engraved camellias all across the windows. And it looks fantastic, so. And the photos of the early women. Right, so that's eleven to eleven thirty. Tim, I don't know what time he'll be back, but you won't be back?
I don't know what time.
Yeah, okay, so we'll just say a period of departure, absence from Tim. So would someone like to move that? Pauline, Aaron, I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no, that's carried. We have declarations of interest on the PX. Part of the meeting from Vicky Buck and Andrew Turner in relation to the Community Housing Trust. We've got public participation, we've got no public forum presentations today, no deputations by appointment and no presentation of petitions. I'd like to move the resolution to include the supplementary report in the meeting. Do I have a second? No, Andrew, I'll take Jimmy Chen. I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no, that's carried. Now, I've got a suggested order for the community boards due to the community board conference in Methven, so I'm very aware that people need to get away from Christchurch in order to get up to Methven for the community boards conference. So I'd like to call Linwood Central Heathcote Community Board. And Sally Buck is not here, so we have Tim instead. Oh, so have you not been advised the agenda order, Chris? No. Oh, well, I'll tell you. It's Linwood Central Heathcote first, Papanoi in a second, Banks Peninsula third, Coastal Berwood fourth, Fendleton Waimea fifth, Hawespool, Hornby, Ricketon next, and then the final one, Spraidin Cashmere. Right, Tim, welcome.
Thank you, good morning, everyone. I'm occupying the heady position of deputy deputy chair. The Linwood Central Heathcote Community Board had a very busy month in April and lots of things happened. We had a lot of deputations and some of those are listed up there and they're also in the report. We also had many matters to consider, some of which were pretty straightforward, there's a list there. I guess one of the ones in there which was a little controversial was about parking, reducing the amount of parking directly outside Christchurch Hospital so a sign could go up. And the board was a little bit unhappy for that and asked for some more information. I want to move quickly though to the meat of the report, which is recommendations to council and significant projects. The, one of these recommendations did exercise a lot of our time and that was the Linwood Eastgate Public Transport Hub upgrade options. We could not come to a decision directly on the information we had provided, so our request to council is to ask staff to give more information on the preferred option to assist with the decision. The next item on that, on the recommendations, the surrender of the Shirley Tennis Club lease and a variation to Richmond Cricket Club is pretty straightforward. It's a swap of use of land which is agreed to by both parties, so we recommend that. And we also discussed the tsunami alert review and we're very keen that council progresses that review and also gives advice on how communities, organisations that approach us looking to do community preparedness can be funded. We've had a couple of these and we're keen to support them, we've given some support. We would like to know more about how to. In the significant projects and initiatives, of course, the most exciting one is the Linwood Wollston Aquatic Facility. We had two workshops on that and the results of those are pretty exciting. We think the facility is going to shape up to be complementary to other facilities around the city, not the same as. It's something that will attract people from across the city to it, the way the concept is shaping up, and we're very excited about the way that's progressing. We also spent time on the Wollston Library and Community Facility, community consultations there considering those, particularly interested in how it will look from the street and helping make Wollston look like a community area and also access to facilities such as toilets for public use. In terms of significant issues, one we also spent a lot of time on and had a couple of delegations about was the inner-city east Linwood Village area. This is Stanmore Road between Hereford and Gloucester Street where Te Huaori Rua Mata is. And there are difficulties there with antisocial behaviour in the Doris Lusk Park, loss of, potential loss of shops, changes in the way the rental properties are post-earthquake. And the board can, is learning a lot about how this particular part of Christchurch works, how affected it's been after the earthquakes and what needs to be done to move things forward. We're particularly keen to set up and have, in the annual plan submission, some, requested some funding is made available for a drop-in centre, which will reduce the pressure on Doris Lusk Park for people who want to gather, homeless people who want to gather and their associates. Terms of other matters of interest, we've spent some time thinking about Ferry Road. It's a bit of a hot potato with the cycleway going through it and parking is a strong issue. And with that one, we've had a request from Grace Vineyard Church that the parking restrictions that apply are close to the church, which are seven-day-a-week restrictions, are given a holiday on Sunday so worshippers can park without breaking the law. We had our board meeting at Rahua Marae and that was also a very interesting one. The board has decided to hold some of its meetings at community facilities to get out there and about not stay in our own little headquarters. And that was a very exciting one. I think all of us enjoyed the multicultural aspects of it and also learning more about how that marae works and what its needs are. No, no more slides. We also discussed the Peacocks Gallup Road, the lifeline through to Sumner and the safety issues around that corner. And it's very pleasing to see progress is happening there and action is occurring. And I guess the rest of what we have to say is in the written report, you can read it, so I'll now open, leave time for questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Glenn?
Yeah, thank you. Tim, is there an understanding of, I'm sure there is, over the issues with Doris Lusks? So there's been a lot of commentary that, you know, as if one thing will solve it, but it's, that's one issue. And my observations are with what I've been asked to do there, the board is on the nail over the short-term solution, but there will need to be probably some long-term...
Oh, it's a very complex issue and we've had presentations from the police and from the community about it. So it is, it is complex. So our request for support for a drop-in centre and thinking about maybe a wet centre somewhere down the track is part of the solution, but there will be a lot more thinking and action.
Yes, I had another question, if I may, just in relation to your first part over the proposed aquatic centre, whether some kind of a local social needs analysis will sit behind that as well. I know that a lot of us, we all want to have aquatic centres, but yeah, they really need to come out and fit the social context.
We've done some work on that and in our, in our work so far, in our discussions with staff so far, it was very much local needs, local needs based and discussing the character of that community and what they're like. And that's one of the reasons why I've said this one's going to be a bit different.
A lot less expensive, I understand, which is great. Just saying. Right, okay, well, look, thank you. I think what we should do, you've got a question for your community board chair?
It was just more of the staff around some of the reports, I just wanted to check when...
We're just gonna go into the reports now. So would someone like to move the receipt of the, of the report? Sarah, seconded down, I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no, that's carried. That's great, thank you. And now we'll move on to the Linwood Eastgate Public Transport Hub upgrade options. Now, this is the one that you wanted to...
Actually, I had a question on the main report.
Well, you can raise that at the community board, yeah?
Well, no, it was raised, so...
Sorry, I thought you said that...
The reports, not of the board, but of staff on the reports.
Oh, okay, well, I've, okay, well, I've gone over that one.
It's a very quick question. Is it okay just to raise it or maybe, otherwise I can raise it in the chief executive's report, but it is just on seven, I'll just make sure people are aware of it, it's on page nine, 7.2, Peacocks Gallup Road reconstruction and wastewater renewal. It's quite a massive project and my understanding is there will be no formal report to the board before it commences. So I'm happy to raise that in the CE's report, just around how, what the process is for significant projects coming for sign-off before it goes out for consultation or even for work. So I don't even think there'll be consultation on that one, so.
Who's doing that? Is that a SCRT project or is that a council project?
It's a SCRT submission, so it'll be council.
Nigehtin?
Okay.
So we can get back about the process and...
Yeah, that would be great, thanks.
Thank you. All right, so next we've got the Linwood Eastgate Public Transport Hub upgrade options. So has, has anyone got any questions on this one? Yanni?
Just appreciate that it's a little bit wider than just the public passenger transport option, but it does seem to me that it's hard to evaluate where that option is best without a plan for this whole area in terms of the intersection. We've currently got the cycleway going through or close to here. We've got the school that I think has made repeated requests Linwood have school for safety improvements. We've got the mall wanting to expand and we've got the issue of the public passenger transport. So I was just really wanting to know if staff felt that we were able to do a sort of holistic traffic, transport plan for this intersection and slightly wider area to sort of help bring everything together. Because, yeah, at the moment we've got money being spent without any sort of plan for the area. There's already works going on on the signals on this intersection.
Yeah, I would hope we would do that. I mean, it wouldn't be sitting there in isolation because particularly with options one and two, it involves putting in a new pedestrian crossing and you can't do that in isolation of the network around it. And with the other options, if they came, if they were deemed to be suitable, again, there would be sort of widespread changes to the network to try and get, you know, circulate the buses safely as possible round the, from Buckley's Road and then back to Buckley's Road. So we couldn't just do it in isolation.
Right, so would it be...
But I mean, it's probably a bit early to say what the nature, how it would actually come to pass. I mean, you know, we couldn't just do any of this in isolation. I think that's the main point, isn't it? It doesn't just sit there on its own.
Except like the cycleway project is gonna make changes to that Cranley Street intersection, except that the traffic signals project that's already been started is making changes to, or just putting the signals back as they were. So there are kind of projects happening without any plan. So I mean, that's why I thought it would be really good to just maybe have an additional resolution that gave staff the mandate to start doing that work around the holistic plan for this area. Because those projects are happening now, that's what worries me.
That makes perfect sense.
Cool.
As Philip said, we wouldn't look at it in isolation and we won't, because as you know, the intersection is a key intersection in the city, it's very busy.
And it's also a high safety risk as well.
Yeah.
So we'll be looking at trying to improve safety on that intersection. No, we're happy with that resolution to look at...
So what would you call that, like an integrated transport and traffic plan for the...
Yep, that's absolutely fine.
So number two, request staff to develop an integrated transport and...
Traffic.
Traffic plan, public transport, is it, or...
Well, it's inclusive. I mean, I want it to be as inclusive as possible.
An integrated transport plan.
We don't need traffic.
Request staff to develop an integrated transport plan for...
For the immediate area.
The immediate area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To consider all the, consider the other works that are occurring.
Yeah, so to consider what?
The other works, like the cycleway.
Yeah, but, oh, to consider all of the works that are occurring. So an integrated transport plan for the immediate area to, I don't know, but to consider the works that are occurring is not necessary? Yeah, taking into consideration all of the works that are occurring in the area.
I mean, it's to join up the works that are proposed, not just the works that are occurring. Because if you just follow the works that are occurring, you may get a really poor outcome because you've got five different projects.
All of the works that are occurring and proposed. And, and proposed, that are occurring and are proposed. Yeah. Is that all right?
Yeah, I think that's good, yeah.
Okay, Aaron, you are next, and then Phil.
Thank you. Just some questions around the bottom of page fifteen and the, there was no consensus except that the PT passenger facilities needed improvement. And I just am reluctant to be spending millions of dollars on another facility that might get trashed. And when I say might, as most of them around the city seem to, the new bus exchange is a fantastic example of a great design which doesn't have the issues and the social problems, yet we're still creating or spending millions of dollars in the suburbs on facilities that do get trashed and some of the buses as well, etching, tagging and antisocial behaviour. What works being done to curb that and to attract more people?
I'm sorry, look, I'm just gonna intervene and say that that's not in order for this particular consideration. We're considering, evaluating the preferred option, which at this stage is not a bus interchange at the mall.
But it's still a major bus facility costing more than a million dollars. Is that okay for those to be trashed? I don't think that...
But this is for consideration in the long-term plan. They are, they are, they're gonna evaluate an option and bring it back. So if you want to add into the resolution that as part of the evaluation, well, they're actually, it's the Buckley's Road facilities upgrade that they're evaluating. They're not evaluating an interchange.
No, if you can lay your fears, there'll be no internal building, it'll be an upgrade of the on-street facilities. Most of the cost is actually the pedestrian crossing to get people safely from the, from the new on-street facilities to the mall entrance. So that's the bulk of the cost.
And we would, we would involve the community support team to review any proposal for the crime prevention through environmental design principles to try and minimise or eliminate crime hotspots, so, you know, dart spots, that sort of thing, to try and, you know, to try and address those issues before they actually occur.
Yeah, but any facility we spend money on, we should be going for the best outcome for that community.
But we're going to consider the actual report as part of the LTP, not now. Phil, and then David.
So will there be further work done on considering the other options too? Because you've referred to the on-street facility at Buckley's Road, option three, option three here in the mall car park area, where we understand from the report that in fact there's a future mall building to be, is proposed in there too. So the question really is, are, while we would like this information by the time of the LTP, are we actually going to be able to have some sort of, I guess, some evidence that in fact that an option like that would be in the mix, say, still, particularly so that people might use that as a central place for, well, a form of a bus exchange, but the, you know, one of the options anyway, that's what I'm wondering.
The answer's no.
No.
We have looked at all the options and taking into account environment canterbury and getting through the intersection and getting buses in and out of that mall car park, it was dismissed as being quite difficult and a conflict with pedestrians and vehicles, so, yeah.
I mean, it would, it would intend, there would be a lot more bus movement through a car park where, which has, you know, pedestrians crossings, cars coming in and out of car parks. So apart from, and also it's just be much more costly because you would, because of the, as Richard said, we would have to develop options to address the intersections of Cranley, Chelsea, probably the car park itself, so.
Thank you, just clearly that clarifies what the options are gonna be.
Yep, David?
Yeah, look, I'm interested to know whether the option in part two there will actually look further at issues that Phil's just raised. In fact, it concerns me that, you know, we have a lot of these bus stops and particularly, well, just about all of them that are associated with the mall, there's problems. Either the mall operators are resistant to, uh, the preferred location of a, of a bus stop. And secondly, sometimes it's, um, the KPIs that ECAN put on their, their transport, whether it's, um, it just adds a bit more time to the, to the bus travel and their timetabling and they resist it from that point of view. But in, in this particular instance, you know, he, this bus stop on Buckley's Road, um, its primary function does serve that mall. Um, it's a, you're, you're actually sending people across one of the busiest streets in the city. And yet, you know, we just heard a minute ago that, you know, there's issues with, um, buses in, in the car park and pedestrians be a hell of a lot slower. So I, I just get concerned that when we're doing these evaluations that we, we're not actually uh, concerned with the primary, um, index of, of, of safety of people. Um, we're quite happy to send them across Buckley's Road. Um, we're quite happy to, you know, have it in the middle of Ricketon. Um, all of these issues, and I actually think that the passenger safety seems to be pushed right down the bottom of the list and followed very closely by ECAN's, um, notion of wanting to minimize the amount of time the buses travel. So I really want to see this, this whole, um, question that we've raised in point two to be looking at the whole pattern of pat, traffic around this area and putting people, people first and, uh, looking at what is the best option.
Is, is fair enough until the mall closes. And when the mall is closed, behind the mall would be the most dangerous place to put people.
True, but there's still no, still no, it's, it's still no safer, um, um, on Buckley's Road either.
Well, yes, they are safer on Buckley's Road.
That's, that's the point of the.
They are safer on Buckley's Road because people driving by can see them. Where they can't see them would be tucked in behind, um, in the middle of the mall.
If it's exceedingly well lit and everything else, I don't think so.
Into a bus exchange tucked in behind a mall that you cannot see into. I would not do that.
Well, I'm afraid our district planning really has been bad in allowing some of these malls to develop the way they have.
It might have been the case if it could have been located next to the twenty-four seven McDonald's. But it's not possible to do that. So, I mean, if that were possible, then you'd, you'd actually have a sense of, um, of, of safety. But there is no safety about having people tucked in behind the mall.
I think for me, it's a question of actually evaluating the, the best and the worst of it, and, and I don't know that we've done that yet.
Yeah, Sarah and then Yanni.
Thank you. I mean, I'm happy to move this. Um, it, the board has had some really, really thorough discussions on this. We've workshopped it. We've looked and we've questioned staff. And, and I think that this is the, this is, this is the way to go. And while there might be issues crossing Buckley's Road, you know, there's a proposal to put in a signalized crossing and that will make things safer. Um, it is a direct route. It has oversight. It might be that, that what happens is that we need a little bit more land or that as the pot, as the bus user population grows, we might need to talk to the mall and have some space on that edge of the mall because it's still right next to the mall. It's just on the roadside rather than in the car park. Um, so I'd like to see us get moving on this. Also really pleased that, I mean, what initially prompted this was some antisocial behaviour concerns. But there's been a lot of work done in that space. Those have, um, have not quite fully resolved, but they have improved, um, a lot with the, the added focus and attention that's come on this space here. And I'd like to think that that would keep improving as we invest in the community.
Need a second?
Yanni?
Well, um, you'll see from the minutes that I didn't support option one and that was because those other options get ruled out. And if you think about the point that David's making, he's, he's absolutely right. Like, you know, our district plan, ECAN actually gave, uh, support to the non-notified consent when they were asked if they were okay with the design being able to exclude buses from going through the mall. I mean, it's just crazy. Like, basically, when you look at malls redeveloping and you think about the future, I think, of public passenger transport, which isn't going to be about big, long buses with drivers, it's going to be smaller vehicles and possibly autonomous. Then I don't think there's any reason why we shouldn't be looking at an integrated solution to this. And the good news is, we actually own the land, some of the land where the McDonald's is. We've actually got it as road reserve and they're leasing it off us. Um, so you could actually do a really lovely integrated development with the library, the mall, uh, and the road and actually get a really nice place where buses can pull in. And as David said, the biggest problem is that ECAN are so resistant to changing the bus routes to let the buses deviate from the main roads to pull in and get a, what I personally think is a better, safer option for people. So, I mean, I think it is really good to do an integrated transport plan. Um, the other issue that we also need to be mindful of is cyclists. Like, this is going to be a major intersection for cyclists. Um, and we've certainly had some feedback from people that, that there is, um, you know, need to have better cycling facilities when people, you know, lock up the bikes, shower, et cetera. So we know the mall was actually through their resource consent to redevelop, has got a chronic, uh, well, a hugely significant lower number of cycle parking than what they should have had, um, by our district plan. So, you know, I just think the opportunity to do an integrated traffic assessment for this area and come up with a transport plan for the future is really important. And, you know, I, I won't support number one because again, I, I do think that that is the wrong approach. I think there's other solutions. Um, and I think number two is actually the critical thing. Before we spend huge amounts of money on fixed, uh, intersection designs, we actually come up with a plan. So, yeah, I, I, I would urge you to support two. Um, and I'm not happy to rule out those other options in option one until two has been complete because I think it should inform, not, not respond to the works that are already proposed.
Okay, um, well, I'm just going to say that I don't know why the council rejected the idea of referring this issue for advice to the, um, uh, joint committee for public transport. And, um, I'm certainly, as a member of that committee, going to raise the issue of the challenges that we have around the malls. And I would like the advice that, um, you've just referred to, Yanni, to take with me because, um, if they are precluding that, I mean, I understand because it's the time of the travel that, that is the reason that they don't want to take them off-road. But actually overseas, it's exactly as you say. Um, but the malls, they're open, they're connected to, uh, train stations that are open twenty-four hours a day. So they're slightly safer than environments that, that are not. Um, and, uh, but, but, um, in actual fact, our buses stop at about eleven o'clock anyway. So, um, just providing for that safety at, at night time, um, after the malls are closed, that, that seems to me to be part of it. But I would really like the transport committee, the joint committee, to be looking at these issues because I don't think they realize the challenges that we're confronted with when we're faced with these decisions. Anyway, I'll put that motion, um, so, and I presume you want to vote against one? And you want to vote against one as well? You're, you're comfortable. Okay. So I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed, they know that's carried and just, uh, Yanni against one. Thank you. And, uh, the next one is the partial surrender of Shirley Tennis Club Police Area. Does someone want to move that? Uh, Sarah, seconded by Yanni. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed, they know that's carried. Um, tsunami alert review. I've just, um, suggested some changes to the wording because of course staff are, we, we haven't actually, we actually haven't formally adopted the, um, or, um, received the tsunami alert review, uh, as a council. So it's got to come back to council. So, um, the proposal was that the resolution read and I'm happy to move that. Staff, uh, note that staff are developing advice on the tsunami alert review. Request staff to prepare and report back on the tsunami alert review and an implementation um, plan based on the tsunami alert review. Never don't need to repeat it. Um, and request staff to consider, no, um.
Include, let's include funding options.
Re, no, request staff to, um, consider, uh, resourcing options, uh, for, uh, resilient plans and community-led preparedness plans, which may be one in the same. So, um, resourcing options, uh, to assist communities to lead the development of, uh, resilience and preparedness plans. Good, I mean, they may well be one in the same, that's why, um, so, and or, and or for the communities to lead the development of, um, resilience. And then just do a slash preparedness. Because, I mean, they, to me, they're one in the same. Yeah, and then delete the rest. Right, cool. Um, that's, that's something that's, um, the, the reason that, and I'll just, um, explain why I've played around with the wording. Um, the reason is, is that there are some recommendations that have, that are in the review. Um, I mean, the, the, the review is excellent. The recommendations are excellent. But I think there will be other recommendations that we'll want to consider as a result of, uh, some of the advice that's in the review. For example, uh, the McDemme advice on tsunami sirens, um, requires some very, um, specific work to be done um, in, in terms of the future. So, um, I'm, 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 I would like to move that. And Yanni, are you happy to second it?
Yeah.
Right. Right.
Just, just very quickly, um, just, um, and I'll just include this in my speaking to it. Um, I strongly support us receiving this formally and I just wondered whether we should put a date on that. Um, we've seen in our area that we've got a number of groups coming to the local board for funding. But it's not just to prepare the planes, it's also for the equipment like, um, you know, that, that they, uh, you know, um, the safety vests, the, the, the other things that people want in an, in an emergency prepared kit. So I just wondered whether there's, it's not just the funding and resourcing for the development of the planes. It's actually also the resourcing of the equipment that people feel that they should have in place. So I just wondered if three could be, could include that or if it already does. Um, but yeah. So I just think it's good practice when we get a review like that that was undertaken, that we do get a formal report back with, here's what we do to respond and you'll, yeah, which is great. So I'm, I'm very supportive of doing that. Um, and I think it's really important that we, we get that, um, with a chance to consider.
Just going to change number two to request staff to repair, prepare and report back. Prepare and report back. It just doesn't make sense. Request staff to report back. To report back on tsunami alert review by the end of June. Um, and provide advice.
On its, on the implementation recommendations.
Yeah, on, on, yeah, and provide advice on.
The implementation of its recommendations.
Yeah, an implementation plan for those recommendations. Because, um, because what we want to do is, is make sure that we've, that we as governance are signing off on the recommendations and the implementation plan. So that the implementation plan may need to, some adjustment, uh, depending on how we respond to the recommendations. Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, the. Yeah. I, I'd, I'd rather leave it just general, but I'm, I'm kind of noting, noting that there may be cost implications to the resilience and preparedness plans, but that comes next.
So we could just take the development out to lead, give us leads and to lead plans. So, because it would be the, the development and the implementation. So it's just utilities to lead resilience and community preparedness plans. And take the development out.
Well, but that's what they're coming for. All right. So, um, can we just leave it like that? Yeah.
And I've just got a question about the timing of it and perhaps Mary can answer this because I understand that ECAN and clearly this will, um, be joined up with the other pieces of work that have been done. But one that ECAN have asked for, from NIWA, is a whole tsunami risk report too. And I understand that isn't due till about July.
But this has got nothing to do with us.
Well, uh, that, it's really just a check with Mary that in fact.
Yes.
So there will, there will be some work, uh, potentially flowing out of this that, um, the team has started on already around, um, the tsunami zo- you know, zones, uh, where welfare centres should be located and, um, transport or evacuation plans. Um, so they, there will be some, uh, work undertaken in advance, but some of it won't be able to finalize till other partners have finished their work. So it will identify that in the plan, the timing of things.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Aaron?
Yeah, Mary, will that plan also, um, indicate the routes, the evacuation routes? Because we don't currently have signage for that. Most cities and townships overseas do. They're like a large blue tsunami exit route.
Actually, most cities don't. Wellington does because they went through a very detailed community engagement process.
Like, uh, the, all the west coast of the US and stuff do.
So the plan will identify, um, when and how that will be done. So the plan won't hit, we won't be ready by the end of June to have all those things in place. But the plan will identify that work is beginning on this and we, um, anticipate that it will be completed by X date.
Right.
So work has, has started on, on evacuation plans and routes, but there are other agencies that have to be part of that.
Thank you.
At least we've got the maps online now. Right, so I shall put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed, they know that's carried. Can I invite, um, Papanoi Inus Community Board, um, to the chair? And, um, while they're coming up, can I welcome the New Zealand Broadcasting School students, um, who came to visit yesterday? I've got new Facebook friends. Thank you. Um, it's great. And I've been followed on Twitter by more people. Hey. My life is complete, yes.
All righty, let's make this snappy. Uh, I just wanted to start off by saying, um, we've mentioned Ada Wells already, I think, this morning, or that might have been before the meeting opened with regards to the rededication of the Camelia Room. And I just wanted to let you know, you may not have been aware that Ada was a teacher at St Albans School, which was at that stage situated in a poor working class part of Christchurch. With her husband's help, Ada put on concerts in aid of the school prize fund. In eighteen ninety-two, Ada, pregnant, sought two months' leave of absence. The North Canterbury Education Board was inclined to grant this. However, it was opposed by the headmaster, James Spate. And of course, we've got a street called Spate Street in St Albans as well. And he wrote a long letter on the delinquencies of Mrs. Wells. So rather than being granted a leave of absence, which as I said, was two months around her pregnancy and, and birth of her child, she was fired. So times have changed. Uh, we still have a way to go. We still have a way to go, I might add, but yes. So I just thought I'd add that. So there's a, a link there with our ward today. All right, we're just going to let the pictures run through. Um, the Edible Garden Awards I'll refer to in our report. There were a number of roading decisions, uh, and I won't go through those individually. Uh, that did raise though, however, the issue of how pedestrian islands or slowing traffic, calming traffic seems to be able to happen reasonably quickly in some parts of Christchurch. Uh, and in our ward, Grahamian Street being one example. And yet, when it relates to schools or areas around children, it appears that there is no budget. Move on, move on. Um, and we've asked for more information on that. Uh, community grants opened on Monday, as I'm sure you're all aware. We noted that the application period is four weeks and not six weeks as it usually is, but that's because it's been through a review period. Um, and they normally open in February, so they're opening much later as well. Now, there is a part A in, in our report, which I will come to and, um, perhaps give you some more detail if you want it in a moment. The work on the sticks and the Kapitoni Stream continues as well. Um, there's some dedicated staff on that, uh, important part of our ward. And there is a survey undergoing at the moment. The work will, uh, commence rather on the tenth of April and will be completed by the thirtieth of April. Uh, the St Albans Community Centre, uh, continues and, and, uh, building hope. The St Albans Community Centre continues and building, hopefully, will start at the beginning of August. There is a time capsule that was dug up or discovered once the old, or when the old community centre fell down. That will be opened as per the very specific process that is outlined in the council's policies and procedures. At this stage, we're looking at putting a new time capsule into the new community centre and including schools and businesses in a kind of competition about what they would like to see in that capsule and why. There will be some guidelines, obviously, because a capsule isn't that big. And we want to include things like the cycleways, which are key in our area at the moment as well. The Garden Awards, which are just flicking through at the moment, they took place on the 6th of April at the Horticultural Society in Ricketton Ave, next to the Hagley Oval area. That was the last time, actually, I think, that anything's going to be held in that building. We had 60 people attend, it was a great result this year with 48 entries in the awards, and that is up from 35, so it was a considerable number. And I think as people get back into their homes and re-establish their gardens, that was a real reason for that. And it was really awesome to see the local community groups getting involved, and some new faces, which is important too. As far as the cycleways go, that has been and continues to be a major issue in our ward as it is in others, and I know you'll be aware of that. We did ask last year, and again five weeks ago, for information on these as we move to the commissioning of them on the 19th of May. We still haven't received any information, and with that date getting closer, of course, we're being asked questions by our constituents, and we would very much like to be able to give them some answers. So we look forward to a briefing and better understanding the public education plans around promoting the cycleways, explaining where rubbish bins will go, how bikes will use them, and how cars will park around them. So we do hope that that comes soon, because it's only, you know, what's the date now? Eight days away. So the Part A in the schedule today, in the meeting agenda today, are there any questions around that? Because we've got some, it's clearly in your agenda, so that's the report actually, but I'll ask any questions around that if you want to ask.
Yep, Erin?
Yeah, it looks good and will make the area safer. The only question I had, Ali, was on page 57, the map didn't show all of the signalised crossings on that stretch of road, was the only point I wanted to raise. I thought that was the one at Halliwell Ave, not marked, and of course, the one that's just being installed now, at Grassmere, is not on there as well. I just thought that was...
Right, okay, we can note that, and that was part of the...
For us that know the area well, it's irrelevant, but for the others that might not pass through...
Yeah, sure, well maybe...
Be lucky enough to go to Papunui regularly.
Maybe staff can note that in stuff that we provide in the future, that perhaps that should be there. But definitely, the board was well across it, yeah.
Yep. Are there any other questions on the Part A on the report?
Can I just add that the staff and the mall owners worked, well, staff worked extremely hard with the mall owners in getting to an area, a place of conciliation and agreement.
Yeah, I thought agreement might have been a bit strong, but...
Yeah, so, yes.
You got there.
Yeah, we got there in the end, and I think that that's all credit to them.
Not just that, they've actually established a really good working relationship now to move forward with. So that's been a really good outcome. The same with the 5.1 with the Sticks, Kapatahi, work that the board has been doing with the community out there, set up a community working group with some board members on it, and out of that has resulted some, with some extra work being done from the land drainage team, so that's been quite productive. It is a long haul, that one, out in the Sticks, but we are getting there, and I think the community is starting to see a response from council with their queries. So that's another good example of a community working relationship with the board.
And can I add that's been improved as well, because I understand there's now been some specific resource applied to that as far as staff goes. And I think that we have to keep that in mind as well. We keep asking our staff to do things, and comms is a part of that in our ward as well. And yet, you know, you need people to do that and time to do that, and I think we have to keep that in mind as we keep asking our staff to do things. Thank you.
So, Mike, you'd like to move that, the report, and seconded by Pauline. So I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed, they know that's carried. And then we'll move to the Part A, signal control pedestrian crossings. So Pauline, you'd like to move that?
Yes.
Seconded by Mike. Yep, I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, they know that's carried. And now we'll move on to, thank you, Ali.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the Spraden Keshmoo Community Board. If you're good with this, I'm just going to get Phil and, who's your other one? Tim. To move and second the care crossing, because, I mean, it's just a no-brainer, and it should be a delegation, so, yeah.
I personally don't think it's entirely a no-brainer, but I take your word on that.
Yeah. Moved by Phil, seconded by Tim, put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed, they know that's carried. So that's the Part A done, and we'll just spend time on your report. Thank you.
And we don't propose to be here for very long. This was our ANSEC Day. Our board has established a small tradition over the last couple of years of going to a local memorial to celebrate ANSEC Day with local residents, reading the poems, reading the biographies of people, of soldiers who went overseas, and thinking quietly amongst ourselves in the small community about what happened. We laid this wreath in Sydenham Cemetery because we no longer have the Waltham Memorial gates in our ward, so we laid this wreath in Sydenham Cemetery against two graves, one who died a week before Armistice Day, and one who died a week after Armistice Day, and both of them died fairly obviously of the Spanish Flu. And that's, sorry about the handwritten thing up there, there was no card attached in, it was my mistake, so I just wrote something in haste. And we also laid a wreath up at the Regimental Memorial in a more formal arena at Victoria Park. Our Community Garden Awards, we had 150 people who received the garden award, and with their family, partners usually, and other people with them. It was a huge evening, loads of people, wonderful gardens. And I took my grandson to Margaret Mahi the other day, and he stripped to his underpants within two minutes and was freezing cold and covered in water, having the best time. And I tell you, some of the joy at these occasions, we must never underestimate them, because they give people a genuine belief in being citizens of Christchurch, and they get the small reward of a little bit of a sausage roll, et cetera, and a recognition. And it was great to see the joy in their faces. Selwyn Street Shops has been in the news in the last two months. It's a bit of a mystery, because as we all know, the master plans have been delayed two years, and we asked for, in particular, for a re-consultation on the Selwyn Street Shops closest to the time when the master plan will proceed. So it was a little bit puzzling, the foray over parking that occurred. But I went and sat on the side of the street there last week with two camping chairs and a desk to see if anybody would like to talk to me about parking, and I wasn't rewarded with a great deal of attention, except perhaps people pointing at that nutter over the other side of the road. And Barrington Mall, we're going to bring this up at the annual plan, so I won't spend too much time on it. I wish the photograph had been taken in Roshau, but it's not. We've been trying, local residents have been trying, they told me for 17 years to get rid of the right-hand turn out of Barrington Mall, and the Barrington Mall management have at long last agreed. Now, we just have to implement it, and of course, it's not cheap. It's not a lot of money, but it's not cheap. And so we're trying to get rid of the right-hand turn out of Barrington Mall because of the danger to pedestrians going to the Spraden Library, people crossing the road, the amount of traffic on Barrington, and the interaction that they have in terms of stopping for the library, going to the mall, and the health centre over the other side of the road. And that's it.
Very good.
Have we pressed enough buttons?
Do we have questions? So would Tim like to move this? And Phil like to second it? Yanni?
Just very quickly speak and say, although the Waltham gates are no longer in your ward, you're always very welcome to use them. And, you know, I recall that the previous council was really keen to see that they were restored, so, you know, I think...
Council, council, community board, we worked hard to get them restored, and credit is true.
Yeah, and the community board was strong advocate to the council to get it restored, and the council agreed, so that was good. And just, you know, to say that I think it's really wonderful to use those local stories, and also those local monuments or memorial places to come together, so the invitation is an open one, but maybe our board can, we'll consider it and what we can do as well.
Thank you, Yanni, you're right.
If I may, just say that the Newfield family, which is a very large family in the local area, had no hesitation, continual pressure with regards to those gates as their fathers had served. So a bit of credit should go to them as well.
Yes, that's right. Thank you very much. So I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed, they know, that's carried. Thank you very much. And actually, I took you out of order because I turned over one too many pages. So there you go. So Banks Peninsula Community Board, Christine.
We've got a few clips to go through, so I thought we might just run those through.
It's very slow, shouldn't we? There you go.
Not quite. We were going to save the best to last, but I thought we'll do it first, because I got handed this this morning, like everyone else, and, sort of ship, it is. I should have one too. So these have come out of the Littleton Business Association, and they were around Littleton for such a long time. Obviously, it was about the ships coming back to Littleton, and so, really, I'd like to take this opportunity on behalf of the Banks Peninsula Community, and Littleton in particular, to say thank you to all those that were involved in the ships coming back, because it's a huge thing to the peninsula, so thank you. So, out of that, we've had a discussion at Community Board on Monday, and we're looking at the possibility of forming a working group to see how we can work when the ships have returned, and see how we can link into Akarawa, and just see how we can make it work for both harbours with the cruise ships. So we really feel like 2018 is going to be our year. Also, just moving on, because we also had a briefing from the crew that are working on Subner Road, so with that being reinstated, that's such a biggie too, to the community, a vital link, and it's brought a lot of comfort to the Littleton community, because up until now, really, the tunnel's the only way out, and you should go right round the base, so that does mean a lot also. Just going back to the harbour, we have lots of interesting, exciting things happening down there. There's the development of the Tiana Marina, and also Naval Point. So they are really big projects that are really going to enhance the harbour, and obviously, I think it's really just going to be good for the economy of Littleton and Christchurch. With Naval Point, there's lots of meetings going on with all the key stakeholders down there at the moment, and I don't envy the planners, I think I've mentioned that before. It's such a huge project, and it's like trying to fit a square peg into a round hole, because there's so many needs, and it's such a, well, the land and all the needs down there sort of just don't work at the moment, so it's just working through all those issues. Just on that too, the community were pleased to get the QRA. I know it's a wee while ago, but that's also border level comfort, and not exactly what is, you know, the state of play down there, so that's been good. This Tiana Marina, it's, as I understand, the only walking, floating marina that is going to be in the South Island. I'm not quite sure about that, but anyway, we're looking forward to it. I think it's very exciting with all the other changes that are happening down in the port. I think it's a really good time to actually mention our master plan that was put together in 2012, because a lot of things are starting to shake out of that for us, and I think it's worthwhile mentioning the things that have happened in the last five years. So it's really working well with the timing of the cruise ships coming back, the reinstatement of Subner Road, all the development in the port. So on the town side of things, we're excited about the museum project, also all the council facilities that have been reinstated. We're really thrilled with the library and the service centre that are now joint facility, and also our new boardroom, which is lovely. We have a wonderful view, I think we're very spoilt. And also our recreation facility, we're all, excuse me, we're all our governance team and their offices. And then, as a real bonus, we do have our civic square, which is called Albion Square, right in front of our boardroom, so it's just really wonderful. And I think it really has helped boost the numbers to the farmers' market on a Saturday. Littleton is just a hub of activity on a Saturday, and, I mean, that can only be good.
Birth, yeah, yes. B-I-R-T-A.
Yeah, we'll move on.
Yes. We won't.
We won't dwell on that one.
We won't dwell on that too much.
You'll change it.
I absolutely love this clip. For those of us that live in Littleton, that's what we're going to see when the cruise ships are back, so it's just wonderful. For those who dream about going away on cruise ships, but can't afford it, for them sitting looking out their window as close to it, so they can drink, so...
That's wonderful. So, I know I've highlighted more about the Littleton side of the peninsula today, and it's a wee bit different to the report that came out, but I really think that those things did need to be highlighted via the wonderful announcement, and we were very privileged to be there, and I thought it was a great occasion. Mr Cruise Ships, we'll finish on there, because like I say, it has been such a big thing for the community. It will bring thousands of tourists into Littleton on a regular basis, once it's completed. And then Akarawa, I think you said it well the day that it was announced, and it will give quite a lot of relief to the community over there, and they have been wonderful accommodating the cruise ships. But we believe that Akarawa will be able to market itself as like boutique cruise ships and accommodate those more appropriate to its size. In addition, day trips from the cruise ships that come to Littleton can go across to Akarawa, so they're the sorts of things that we're looking at at the moment. And then, in 2014, cross-exit and community tourism estimated that returning cruise ships to Littleton would earn the entire city an extra $300 million over 10 years. An influx of tourism to our city will help in every aspect of our city's economy. So just in closure, that's what's happening on the peninsula, and I have to say, we're all just got lots of positive, exciting things happening, and so we're really pleased with where we're at, and like I say, we believe 2018 is going to be a good year for the peninsula. So thank you.
If I could just speak to it briefly, and thank you very much indeed, Christine, for the report, and great that you focused on the cruise berth announcements this morning. That is a huge announcement for Littleton, for the peninsula, for Christchurch, and in fact, for the region, quite possibly for the country. It's a major piece of infrastructure we're talking about there. And you're absolutely right, that's... And you're absolutely right, that announcement brings about some considerations for Littleton in terms of the way that the Littleton community can really make the most of particularly the economic development opportunities that that cruise berth development presents. And we're fortunate to have a couple of years of lead time before those changes actually happen, before the 2019 cruise season. And it's great that the community board passed a resolution at its meeting on Monday to look at ways of working with representatives of the Littleton community, the business community in particular, to make the most of those opportunities. I actually met with the business association at their meeting the other night and they were very excited about that, so that's a big step forward. At the same time, of course, we're very aware that in Akeroa there have been different views expressed around the cruise ships. Certainly there are some in Akeroa that are very pleased about the Littleton cruise berth announcement because it relieves the pressure on Akeroa, in particular the pressure on infrastructure. At the same time, in Akeroa, I think we need to be sensitive to the fact that there are some, particularly in the business community, that are feeling a sense of future loss, that some of those cruise ships won't be visiting there. By the same token, it's great that the community board are going to be working with the Akeroa community, business community in particular, to look at ways that they can make the most of the changed environment from 2019 onwards. And in that regard, I met with the chair of the Akeroa District Promotions, essentially the Akeroa Business Association, to start to talk about those opportunities yesterday as well. So I think you're absolutely right in identifying opportunity all round. This is a big announcement for Littleton, for the peninsula, with far wider economic implications, positive economic implications that go way beyond the city. So now, thanks very much indeed for highlighting that in your presentation today.
Thank you. Oh, it was already seconded. Yeah, okay. Pauline?
Question on the new bus stop in Norwich Key and people are having difficulty crossing the road there. Are you progressing that?
Yes.
Thank you. You called for a report or something?
Yes, so the bus stop's been reinstated down, it's been moved, so we're just waiting for the traffic lights to be, well, they're there. We're not quite sure exactly when they're going to start doing their thing.
Oh, they're there but they're not activated?
No, that's a word, activated.
Okay, so you're progressing that?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Right, I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. And now we move on to the proposed speed limit changes and parking restrictions Little River. Andrew, you'd like to move that? Seconded by David. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. And is there another? Yeah. That was all from, yeah, yeah, so thank you very much.
Sorry, Peta's coming late, so she would like to just comment quickly on the Akeroa wastewater working party, would that be possible?
Yep, yep, sure.
Look, we decided that we would actually focus on Littleton because we had so many things actually going on on Banks Peninsula, it's very hard to give due cognizance to whatever's going on, so we decided that we would actually focus on Littleton. Perhaps next time we'll focus on Akeroa. But I just wanted to say about the Akeroa wastewater working party. Despite it being done under a very short timeframe, which was over about seven weeks, we had, or a month, we had seven meetings in a month. We had a working party that was selected from the community, they put their hands up and we came together. We had a technical working party that worked alongside us and we had an incredible support from our city council staff, both our governance staff, our administrative staff, to make the process work. And as you'll see in here, we've actually come up with a joint statement. It was an ideal opportunity to get the views and we found that our community has got so many ideas itself of how it might resolve those issues. So moving forward now, the difficult time will be after the submissions, the submissions, I think the hearing, the submissions have closed, they closed on Monday. It'll be interesting to see what comes out of that discussion process and the outcomes of that. The hearings, this particular working group was passionate about what they were doing. I think they'll be looking at very closely how their joint statement is looked at going forward and that it was a joint statement that not everybody could agree to, but the things that we could agree to are in the joint statement. So it was an excellent process and we should be looking at how that is done down the track. Had some good terms of reference and we got on with the job. So it was, for us, it was a good working party, but the, you know, the outcome is, will be, well, what reflects, and our outcome will really value whether our working group was in any benefit at all. So, but it turned around a lot of thinking in the community by us all working alongside each other with Naitahu and our local Nangabisiders. So there were opportunities to change your ideas and everybody did change their ideas, including the staff that was sitting alongside us. So it was a great process. So many thanks for allowing our community board the opportunity to bring that working party together.
All right. Well, we've already received the report, so did anyone have any questions? No. I mean, we've got work to do obviously in that regard, so it's probably better that we don't. Yeah. Thank you very much for that and I'm sorry, you were late, but you are here on time for the Ada Wells, the Camelia Room dedication in quarter of an hour, so that's great. But we'll move on and I'll invite the Coastal Burwood Community Board to come forward.
I just have to stand for a little bit longer so that you can just read my t-shirt.
Gentlemen- We've seen it, we've seen it on Dave. It actually looks better on you, I'm just saying.
Sorry, David.
You took that very well, Dave. Yeah.
That's all it needs, I've got a bag of salt, I can donate.
I'll share it to the next coffee, David. Yeah, thanks for that. Good morning, everybody. Great to be here. It's really exciting just to hear what's happening around the city, the community board reports. It's really interesting to sit there and actually hear what is going on, so thank you. The Coastal Burwood Community Board report, the community board decisions under delegation, if you've got any questions you can ask me later, but I'll just highlight that, of course, you'll be aware that we've got the New Zealand Community Boards Conference coming up this afternoon in Methven, so a lot of the elected members from the community boards will be going to that, so that's going to be a really good time to mix and mingle and do some networking. Part A that we have, that we're presenting today, is for the deed of surrender and the deed of lease to the Family for Life Trust. You've got the information there, they're wanting to start up an early learning childhood care centre there. It is based at the Aranui Playground. I just thought that I would bring to your attention the fact that this particular building that you can just see up there on the screen is regarded, was built by the community and it's regarded as the Aranui War Memorial and it was built originally for scouts in a play centre. So it was built by this community. So the ANZAC services are held there and they have been held there for the last 10 years and they raise the flag there every time and that will continue to do so apparently. Also, the trust has indicated it's quite a sort of a derelict sort of an area. There, there's a bit of a car park, you can't actually see it on this picture, which is really quite rough and the trusts have indicated that they'd really be quite keen to seal that if this were to go through. Also, I went to visit the preschool centres that they already run at the moment and they bring a lot of life. The buildings that they actually have purchased already, they've done those up to an amazing standard and I think this will just bring some real life into a bit of dead spot in this community. So that's over to you for today. Significant projects and initiatives, we've, the QE2 there, we've got, we've been told now that by staff that we're able to have a hydrotherapy pool, which is really exciting. There were some savings made there on the project, so that is going to be amazing and a real benefit to those that perhaps use the Burwood spinal unit and oldies like myself. So it's going to be 34 to 35 degrees Celsius and the pool is approximately 19.5 metres by six and a half metres. The next one is Aranui, sorry, Avon Side Girls High School and Shirley Boys High School came to deputation to us and they gave us a flyover through their new plans, which was absolutely amazing. We've put the link on the document there so that you can go there and have a look and see what it's actually going to look like. It's just quite outstanding. The other one, of course, significant project initiative is the community issue of south shore flooding, where the south shore residents produce their own report, which I mentioned last time that I was here. We are just waiting for a meeting, which is going to be scheduled by staff in the upcoming week. Community Board Significant Matters of Interest, was really exciting news for us to have the South New Brighton Motor Camp keys signed over or handed over on the 1st of May. The board went down and welcomed Sam and Jackie Hawkins into the area. We did a walk through the whole entire camp. The Hawkins family have been associated with the camping ground for many, many years. They used to holiday there, so they're really excited, they're going to be a family-focused camping ground. So that's absolutely awesome and it's also going to, you know, provide place, which is going to be enhanced for the freedom campers and issues that we tend to have around the place. And they want it really to be a home away from home, so we welcome the Hawkins family to our community. The, oh, sorry, no, just going backwards a little bit, sorry, we've got ANZAC Day Services, the board members also attended the Burwood, New Brighton and Aranui ANZAC Day Services events there, you can see coming up, what we've got there, or the events that we've had. You can see an amazing picture there of a cheeky little Easter bunny sitting on our very famous whale and that is the Ray White Beachside Boys. And also with Strategic Urban Renewal Force surf, put on a, put 5,000 Easter eggs in the Rafferty Domain so that the kids could find them with their parents and for the poor old parents that couldn't quite make it, they provided a coffee cart for, just to revive them and a sausage sizzle. So that was about local businesses also giving back to the community, so that was really exciting there. The New Brighton Seaside Market, you can see that on the top right corner, that is held every Saturday in New Brighton from 10 till 2, so I'd encourage you to come down and check that out. But another unique significance about that market is that any profit from it, from the storeholders and that goes back into the community and into any events that we might have, so huge community spirit there by the people that run the market, it's amazing. Bus to it, now, come on people, this is, we've delayed it a few times now, it's on 22nd of May and you're gonna, it's just after the annual plan, so you'll have been in here for at least five days cooped up, so you'll be needing some seaside air by then, so please come along and check out what we have to say, apart from the fact that it will help you make more informed decisions. So. Thank you, if you would like. What else have we got on there, Joe? Joe's doing an amazing job for me there. Are we on to our last slide?
We are.
We have got the, I'd just like to actually emphasise an event that has now come into our area, this is my final thing, it's Easter Camp and it is, it's held at Spencer Park, which is now in our ward, which we're very pleased about. And it's organised by Canterbury Youth Services, CYS, who generally fly under the radar, but I just felt that we just needed to acknowledge the dedication that this organisation gives to these teenagers every, all throughout the year, but also specifically for Easter. It is youth groups that come together from all over the city and all over the South Island, actually. It is inter-denominational, but it's not just youth groups that go, they also invite a lot of the community. Phillips Town, New Brighton, there's a huge amount of kids that actually go from there. People donate so that they can. And they, the core purpose of this is to celebrate the Easter story, of course, and this camp has been going for over 20 years. So picture this, there are three and a half thousand teenagers who sleep over at Easter at Spencer Park, three and a half thousand. If you think about that for a minute, the organisation, the dynamics, the security is absolutely awesome. The police, yes, they do visit, but not in their normal capacity, they go out to mix and mingle. And as they were wandering around the campsite, they were absolutely amazed at how many kids they actually knew by name and they knew their history. And yet, three and a half thousand kids, no alcohol, no drugs, no one sent home, no trouble. That is just outstanding. Easter Camp offers a new start, create a new image, learn that life can be different, fun can look different and watch them rise to the occasion. So CYS don't receive any funding as an organisation from council, but they actually have a really good working relationship with the council staff out there at Spencer Park, so that's fantastic stuff, thank you very much. So if you would allow us, if it will work, we have a video here, so if you allow three and a half thousand teenagers to take two and a half minutes of your time, that'd be awesome and that's me over and out. Thank you, Joe. Thanks, everyone. No, we're going into hibernation.
They just get better and better, so.
Well, I know, I spotted those too, actually. Yeah, yeah.
It was really good having the link on your report to the overview, but I didn't feel like it was two schools, you know, when I looked at it, so, yeah.
Wait and see.
Huh? No, I didn't.
They assure us it is, but.
I know, but I wasn't expecting to see a joint entrance, that's what.
Oh.
I guess that was what surprised me the most.
Physically delineated after that, but.
Yeah.
Just wanted to join up.
Administrative facilities.
Yeah, and that makes, it actually makes good sense, but anyway, that's happy days. Yanni?
Yeah, just wanted to.
10.57, 10.57, just saying.
Oh, no, very quickly, just, we also had the presentation at our community board and one of the gaps was there seems to be no formal agreement or MOU between the Ministry of Education, the boards, the council, around how all the space is going to work together, so we thought it would be really good to start work around having some joint understanding agreement around how all that space at QE2, Scholes, Eastern Rec Sport works together, so just to let you know.
Right, so that's been moved by Glenn, seconded by David and I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. Now, it's 10.58, I intend to spend one minute with David moving the deed of surrender and deed of lease to Family for Life Trust at Aranui Playground. You'd like to move that? Seconded by Glenn. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. And the new lease for the Burwood Association Football Club, who've been there forever anyway, that would like to be moved by Glenn and seconded by David and I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. And what a perfect timing, 10.58, actually you did it really well, so we'll now adjourn the meeting until 11. the meeting until 11.30 and we'll go and join Ada Wells's grandson's family for, and former colleagues, and you're all invited obviously as well, to reinstate the Camelia Room and Te Horonona this time and to, and to, yeah, reflect on the life of Ada Wells. Thank you.
Thank you for having us today. Apologies from our Chair David Cartwright and Deputy Chair Sam McDonald, they can't attend, so I'm doing it on their behalf. Happy to take the board report as read, I'll skip our non-PowerPoint presentation, our non-video and just pretty much go straight to questions. But before I do that, just a couple of things that I'd like to raise or point to and highlight is the Christchurch community response undertaking the door-knocking exercise in the Brunwarra community this month. It'll be great to see the results from that door knock for us. In addition, the community meeting that was held on March 29th for concerned residents in Brunwarra regarding the proposed sale of state housing in the area. I'd like to acknowledge Council Livingstone, who isn't here, right at the second for attending of concern was the impact the uncertainty is having on the housing New Zealand tenants, particularly those most vulnerable in the community. In the chief executives' report coming up later at the Capital Projects, the construction of the new Bishopdale Library and Community Centre is on track with an opening planned at the end of July. Matters of interest for the community also include the Rochdale Street Funeral Home, as you well know, so the concerns raised over the granting of the non-notified resource consent. And finally, if I may, as a newly-elected member to the community board, I'd like to thank the Fendleton-Wamari-Hewitt governance team for their professionalism, wealth of community knowledge and insight through these first months of the term. And in addition, acknowledge the commitment they and many others in the council show our city and our wider communities in the secondary roles such as emergency response to the events like Port Hills fires and the November 2016 Kikolda earthquakes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I was just going to ask one question, and I'm looking it up now, but who is the Christchurch community response and what do they... Are they collecting personal information or are they collecting just overarching information?
If I read from our report here, they'll visit approximately 1600 homes...
I'm just asking who they are.
Who they are.
The partnership of Christchurch churches.
Yeah, I believe they actually started out at Avon Head and started post-quake to go door-to-door, just to talk to people, get their issues, survey them on issues relating to the quake, and they've done most neighbourhoods because I think they're coming up to 90,000 households.
Yeah, this is the last bit of research.
Okay. And what are they doing with that? Are they going to share that with us or...
Yes, they will be bringing a report back to the community board, I believe.
To... Okay. Each of the community boards with... Well presumably, if they've done other areas...
They've got moving into Kashmir, so...
Yeah, they've reported to boards as they go, and as they've gone into different areas, they've been involved, usually church groups from that area, who then, numbers of them have gone on to be volunteers in other areas, so it's one of those things that's kind of...
No, it's a great concept. I'm very, very much in favour of door-knocking, but you know, personal information's an issue that I just kind of, you know, I mean, it's something you've got to be aware of, but also sharing the information so that, in a generic form rather than specific, so that, you know, we can make good decisions, that sort of, help inform the community plans for all of the community boards.
Absolutely, and hopefully they'll come and do a presentation to the whole council with that generic information once they wrap up, so...
Well maybe the acting chief executive could take that on board because I think that would be a very good outcome. Thank you for raising that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I realise I've come in halfway through this, just on that door-knocking, I think...
I noted that.
Bob Henderson's, sorry?
I noted that.
Yes. Bob Henderson's approach, his whole team over the door-knocking, I think was highly regarded, seen as open and respectful and kind of no-agendas, so that could be someone you might want to contact.
Yep, great. All right.
All right. That's brilliant, thank you. So we'll just move on to the Hewitt Road, proposed no-stopping restrictions, nobody's got any issues with that, have they? Okay, so we'll take, moved by Raf, seconded by Jamie, received the community board report. I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried, and then Jamie will move and Raf will second the item number 19. I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. We'll move on to the Haweswall-Hornby-Ricketton Community Board.
Thank you very much, madam mayor and councillors. I haven't got the PowerPoint for you, unfortunately we haven't caught up with that level of technology yet, have we, Mr Watson? In our report, we've got the trees issue, we've got that sort of nuts-and-bolts thing, what I'd like to see, so I think some of the other community boards would back me up on this, it would be really, really good if we could progress the trees in public places working policy, so it helps us when these requests come to the community boards that we're all singing from the same hymn sheet. Moving on, the two-part-ays, the Ricketton Racecourse, Lickaban, and the interim use of the Haweswall, former Haweswall library, so we're very, very supportive of both of those, and just like to acknowledge the staff that, from this organisation, that were involved in the Port Hills fires, and appreciate the fact that the fires are out, but there's still a lot of work to be done up there, so it's going to be an ongoing issue, both positive and negative, I think, for our communities in the coming months. And we're really pleased that the liquor licence application got turned down for 76 Ricketton Road, and appreciated the fact that our community board did ask for the opportunity to present to the liquor licensing authority, and we were granted that opportunity even though we weren't submitters, so that was very helpful. And really, the next exciting thing if we turn over is the community board's significant matters of interest. And our dear old caterpillar, bulldozer that's in Harrington Park, has been graciously restored by members of the local community, actually sandblasted it and repainted it and fixed it up, so that was something that I was really concerned about, and has happened historically through Christchurches. A tractor or this sort of equipment is taken away from a park, and the community are told, "Oh, we're just taking it away to restore it and bring it back", and they don't come back, so I'm really, really pleased that this significant monument in Ricketton is staying there, so just like to say that that work was done by volunteers from the community. And the movie, oh yes, the Wayne Francis Charitable Trust, done a documentary called Our Story, and it's about the positive developments undertaken in the Ricketton West community through the work done by the Oak Development Trust and the Ricketton Neighbourhood Policing Team, and that is an excellent, excellent video, and we'll get the link to that sent around, so that you can share that with as many people as you like, it's a really, really, really good story, so it certainly changed significantly a major area of Ricketton in a fairly short time, and that community is now strong enough and supportive enough of each other to keep that momentum going into the future, so it's a really, really good documentary, and I would highly recommend it. And that's our report, is there any questions, myself or my dear friend, Mr Watson?
Moved by Jimmy Chen, seconded by Anne Galloway. I'll put the motion.
Questions?
Oh, sorry, did you have a que, sorry?
Around the 22nd, I see that the board's obviously going to be using $20,000 of their funding, and there's going to be a rental on that, is there any way that that rental can actually be returned back to the boards for use in further community projects?
Is that a question of...
We're happy to explore it, I suppose, one of the things about the $20,000, also the board has tasked us to work with the Haweswall project, to see whether we can reduce that further by working with the community to do some of the repairs that are needed, which I think is in line with council's strategic directions, so we'll be doing that, so there may not be too much of a capital nature that needs to be spent at the end, but we'll certainly explore where the rental goes through to detail, I don't have options like that.
Very good. All right, well I'll put the motion on the report, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. Move on to the Ricketton Racecourse, and you'll note that the times have changed, so that it's 7am to 12 midnight, so it's explicit in terms of the correct times. Yeah, so would you like to move that, Jimmy, seconded by David? I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. And then we move on to interim use of 381 Haweswall Road. So are we going to add in there, not only to reduce the amount, but will camp, can force staff to work with the community board to see if the rental itself can be returned to the community board?
Words around and explore, I think.
Yep, okay. We'll just request staff to explore options around reimbursing the community board, yeah, in relation to the rental received, something like that?
Yeah, they're kind of fee, because six months around the, $5,000, $5,000 around six months, yes.
Reimbursing the discretionary response fund, is it called? Okay, reimbursing the community board's discretionary response fund.
There's some, I don't really know them, but there's a Presbyterian church involved, so I'll just...
He's deputy, he's called.
Yeah, I know, but god, it's a long bow.
Well, we all do it.
God, because my grandparents were, okay, no. No, it's all right. Can you just say that Glenn Livingston?
Is it Presbyterian?
But only on Sundays.
So is the acting chief executive.
Oh, that's all right. All right, so that's, so he didn't participate in the thing, so I will, no, we need a mover and a seconder, we're a good idea, Jimmy Chen, seconded by Vicky Buck, I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. Thank you very much. Why? Oh, because it's in Haweswall.
It's all her work.
It's been all her work?
Yeah, yeah.
It's been her life's work, that's completely unfair then. That's all right, okay, carry on, thank you. Now we move to the mayor's monthly report, so feel free to grill me. Yani, you wanted to make some comments about the heritage event that you attended on our bahas.
What are you going to do next, Rhys?
It is the mayor's report, but the mayor can't go to everything, and sometimes I get councillors to go to things that I can't go to, and actually, Yani volunteered before I even knew it was on.
Okay, well I was hoping to have some photos for you, but haven't been able to do it due to a few issues, so I'll send those around, but there's just a few things to say, and that is that it's going really, really well, so this is the future of heritage workshops that we've had as an organisation, as a council, and it's leading to the development of hopefully a heritage strategy. So the survey, there's a survey that closes on May 22nd, we've had 75 people participate, that's on the Have You Yourself website, strongly encourage those councils and board members to send that round, all your contacts, and encourage people to get involved. The two workshops, there was a workshop on the 26th of April, North Beach, and we had Ruth Dyson MP there along with 26, 33 other people, and that was really nice to meet in that North Beach, the Wool Memorial Hall. One thing that did come out of that is that would be really great to put wifi into our community facilities, so that when we have those sorts of workshops and functions, it's great for people to be able to be connected. The second workshop was held in the function room at council, 6th of May, and that included Nicky Wagner, MP, and 43 people, so that was really good, she's also the minister of, the newly appointed minister of earthquake recovery, so that's even better, that she took the time out of her busy schedule to drop in. We've had three drop-in sessions, or two so far, but the last one is on this Saturday, 62 London Street, from 10 to 12, and that's at Grubb Cottage, and the other two drop-in sessions, the one in town wasn't so well-attended, but the one in Akeroa at the Gaeti was, and there was about 28 people there talking mainly about Akeroa and the Peninsula Heritage. There's other consultation planned, which is a run-in internal staff workshop throughout the different units of council, including libraries, to really get some views internally. There's a visit to a number of schools, there's been a presentation to a postgraduate environmental science class, and there's also the formation of a partnership with Nahtahu and the local Runanga, and works going on in that. The next steps are really to, for the information to be collated and reviewed, the identification of key themes and recommendations, and then in May-June meetings with the Runanga representatives, 5th of July an informal briefing to the SCD Committee of Council, the Social and Community Development Committee, 7th of July a meeting with community board chairs. So I just wanted to acknowledge the awesome effort of staff in organising those forums, I think one of the key things that has come out of the people that are participating is that although they felt that, you know, it's been really difficult with heritage, they really love the opportunity to have actually been able to come together, and I also wanted to acknowledge councillor Anne Galloway for attending the workshops as well, because people really like the idea that we were having a two-way engagement, listening and talking and understanding what people's views were, and I think that's a really good model, as we talk about moving forward for the LTP, of having a more regular engagement with key sectors to get those ideas and those contributions. So I think staff have done an amazing job on getting those things organised, there's still a lot of work to be done, it's a great step, I think, to the city coming up with a really coherent and clear vision and strategy for what we do with heritage going forward, so thank you to everyone that's been involved, thank you for the opportunity, just to say a few words as part of your report.
I've got a question, because it's quite a diverse sort of month, isn't it? So there's everything from the Ministry of Awesome's 5th birthday through to Anzac Day to handing over villages to saying goodbye to Air New Zealand, from the museum to saying goodbye to Gerry, I was just wondering, what were the highlights of the...
I'm really grateful when councillors can do things for me, and I just kind of want to acknowledge Yani, he really took that one up on his own volition, but then reported through the mayor's report, and I really appreciate that, and I want to encourage others to do that too. Phil Clearwater represented me at the opening of the Salvation Army Citadel, well, it's not a Citadel anymore, but, or is it?
City Core.
City Core, City Core, and I mean, it's a tremendous facility, and obviously, the Salvation Army have played a significant role in our city, so I was, you know, sad that I couldn't attend, but I can't attend everything. I really liked Delman Architects of Space, so Richard Delman's a local architect, and I went to primary school with him, and I said that, you know, if you can't ask somebody you went to primary school with who's turned out to be the mayor to come and open your building, then there's something wrong with the world, so I really enjoyed doing that. I loved the Pilot Pacifica Youth Parliament, they, there are some extraordinary young leaders in the city, and I feel very confident about the future of our city when I go to an event like that and see Josiah and some of his...
Is it?
Is it? No, I'd better say happy birthday on Facebook. Yeah, so it just was, yeah, extraordinary. But look, I'm really pleased that I've made contact with the new minister of local government. The Honourable Anne Tolly actually knows a lot about how our city operates, and I've reinforced that message, that we are up for trialling new ways of doing things here, that's part of, you know, who we are, and in a post-disaster environment, there's just opportunities to do things differently, so I've reinforced that message, talked to her about the inappropriate division of functions on public transport, but we won't go there. And I've also actually met more than once with the Honourable Nicky Wagner, and we are establishing joint meetings on a very regular basis, and I'm very confident about how we will be able to build on that, that community engagement approach that regenerate Christchurches locking into place in the city, so that's great, and, oh gosh, there's so many highlights, Ministry of Awesome, I have to reflect on that, so they had a very small get-together, really just to acknowledge where they've come in five years, I can't imagine the city not having them, you know, now, and yet they didn't exist five years ago, so it's, they've done an extraordinary job in terms of that emergent leadership that seizes the opportunities, and they really have helped the city, I think, not only recover, but also springboard and look at new ways of doing things as well, so anyway, that was just a quick snapshot, thank you for the question. Okay, so would someone like to move, you'd like to move it?
Yeah, I'd like to move, but I'd like to comment on one event.
You want to?
In response to the Song Chinglin exhibition, I also was in there, you know, it's not only the Song Chinglin, the kind of photo exhibition, actually it's the Rayvi Eri and the Song Chinglin, both they are the long-term friendship between China and New Zealand for probably 50 years, so the Rayvi Eri is an excellent figure, you know, yeah, 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 but a moment in Level One, we still have the exhibition, we, all fellow councillors not yet to have looked, I encourage you to have looked, that's where, where we lost why.
Stairs.
Stairs, yeah.
Yep, when we first went to China to set up the sister city, Rayvi Eri was there, so we got the pleasure of meeting him, so we actually asked him what he missed most from New Zealand, and he said boysenberry ice cream, so the task was to get boysenberry ice cream across to China without it melting, but we did it. Your photo is in China, and your smile hasn't changed. Right, so you'd like to move the report, seconded by Andrew, thank you, I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried, and now I hear over the break that there's heaps of questions for the acting chief executive. on the, yeah, so let the grilling begin.
Thank you. I don't know whether I will enthusiastically say, "As the mayor, please feel free to interrogate me." But I just want to sort of highlight a few things in the report. You'll see from that front page that we've had a lot of focus recently on emergency response and recovery. So we've had the tsunami report, the preparedness for the Cyclone Debbie, which impacted as much as we thought, thank goodness, the fire response, but also for all of those moving into reviews, the review stage and the recovery phase. So we have completed the tsunami review, as we spoke earlier. We're starting our review on the fire, but we also are contributing to the national operational review by fire around that event. You will get back next month, the, or later, actually, yes, no, early next month, the recovery plan for the Port Hill slip fire, as well as that tsunami review, and then should be shortly after that, our review from the fire as well. We, also, the other thing to highlight is, in this report, it mentions the awards that we gained through SolGum, and I think that actually last time I was sitting in this chair, I mentioned those because they'd just come through. So today I'd actually also like to highlight another couple of awards that same team received last night, or yesterday. So the consenting group received the commitment to customer service and excellence, and also the, sorry, innovator of the year, and that was from the Building Officials Institute in New Zealand. So fantastic work by that consenting group. And actually, I see that people have got their heads up, so I'll just skip over the other things and take them as read, unless anyone's got any questions.
Yep.
There was an affirmative comment on that consent. At the time, we lost it, and I think Yani will agree with me, two very user-friendly cabinet ministers amongst many were Maurice Williamson and Chris Tremaine, and they were great. And Maurice Williamson said, "We want you to fly across the line." So it's good to, those were his words back then, and it's good to see this now, that we actually have done that, so...
And also, you'll see from the report, just not remaining static, so still continuing to put new improvements in place. So on page three, there's mention of the new programmes and fast-tracking.
Andrew?
Thank you. Under Transport, under City Services, delighted to see that the first of the cycleways to be completed will be the Little River Link. Is there any celebration planned to mark the opening of that cycleway? It's a huge achievement. I mean, all the work that the various teams have put into making those cycleways happen, to see the first one completed, absolutely brilliant. I'm really keen to see some kind of a celebration to mark the opening of that.
Link with Sowin, isn't it?
This is the one that goes from Muhaus Avenue right the way out to Little River.
So we have got our transport people here. Do you have a vet planned?
We picked this up at the ITI committee yesterday, though, and we've, and staff are sharing us that they've got things in place, especially for the Papanui parallel, which is shortly after, it's about two weeks away.
We tried to work with the Minister's Office, Minister of Transport's office, to, you know, trying to get a note out to say where we're at with it all tagged.
Very good. Any other que, yeah, Yani?
The question that I had before, around the whole way in which Peacock's Gallop, those massive projects that are still happening post-earthquake, how they're reported back to the community board and to the public? And I am concerned, we were told at the community board, I'd think that there would be no consultation and no decision-making regarding that, that they would just happen. But if you think of Rickett and Road, that's a pretty massive project there, it's, to me, a similar sort of project. So it would be good to get some clarity around when things will come to us for sign-off, before they go out for consultation and before work starts.
So I did transfer that question down to the team when you asked it earlier, so are you able to respond now?
Peacock's Gallop is part of the Southern Corridor that is done underneath the non-scurt programme, which is part of the cost-share agreement, and so the whole corridor has been out for consultation. The issue that we've got at the moment is the broken sewer main that serves all of Sumna. We couldn't get in there because it was sitting underneath the containers. And so we couldn't do anything until the containers were lifted off. And so as soon as they are, we've redone to the design, and we are going in to replace it now as part of that government non-scurt programme, as part of the cost share. So that's going in now, and then on top of that will become the pavement there, and we are working through the final details of that, including the safety rail on it. There are a few areas around, and I sent an email or a thing around Maua Point, where we're going to change the traffic. That Peacock's Gallop is going to be replaced like, like, like at this stage. However, it's going to be built, and we will come back and consult regarding the coastal pathways, which is going to go on the outside, so the two will be linked. We sent out a memo on Maua Point, for example, because we're going to change the traffic layout, and that will have to be a decision of councils of whether they're prepared to shift bus stops, look at no-stopping lines, et cetera, et cetera. I think, help me here, we gave a timetable of that, hopefully the work will be done by Christmas. That period, that, the corridor, we have got an extension of the 83% subsidy we get from NZTA until June 2018. So we've got really a 14-month window to finish that work.
So does that answer your question?
No, so is there going to be like a report, is there going to be public consultation on it?
Did you catch it, Dave, is there going to be a report to council on our public consultation?
Basically, we wouldn't normally, when we're putting light, there will be public consultation on Maua Point, because basically we are changing things. When we come and do the coastal pathway, that final piece from, basically, Red Cliffs right through to the Surf Club, there will be consultation on that. There will have to be resource consents on that, because it will somehow, I'm not sure exactly the detail, it'll either get piled into the coastal area, or it may overhang the coastal area. Look, I don't know the whole details. So there will be quite extensive consultation on the finish of that product, incorporating how all those components link up. In the short term, we are just replacing about 200 metres of pavement, but we are putting that safety barrier in there as part of that, out of safety improvements, I think, probably, because that's not part of replacement of the corridor, because there wasn't a proper safety barrier there prior to everything.
So would it be possible just to get a memo out, just outlining the broad timeline in terms of when community boards will hear, and when there'll be consultation, when reports will come to council?
I think that would be really useful, because part of the problem, like in this corridor, we've had feedback from people, like, they didn't like the design of the fences, but there was no, there was a project team that was making decisions, there was no community board or council decision-making. So people felt really alienated from actually the process, and I'd be really concerned if that was the same approach, because I think it's really important that the local community can feel that they can put their views forward, and there's a local democratic decision-making around that.
So I've just got the nod that we will send out a timeline, just giving dates of when those things are going to happen.
Yeah, so what's not been consulted on, what has been consulted on, and if people have concerns, how they can express those. That'd be really useful. Thank you.
Yep. Anything, David?
Look, I just noted, Leoni has returned to the room, and as chairman of the Regulatory Performance Committee, I would really just like to acknowledge, acknowledge the great work that does continually come out of this unit, and they are very motivated in terms of continuous improvement. There is always something new on the boil in that department, so things are evolving all the time, and they are responding to the changes in our building climate. We are shifting more to a commercial focus in the city now, residential has peaked and is tapering off, and the unit continues to adjust to these changes in their workload, and at the same time does put a lot of effort into continuous improvement, so well done.
Very good. Sarah?
Thank you, just a quick follow-on from what Yani was talking about. I think it's fair to say that the community in Sumna are really, really looking forward to having that section of road done. I mean, it's going to be very disruptive, having it dug up and lanes and things shut on and off. But actually, anyone who's driven out there knows that the surface is incredibly poor, as it is round Maua Bone Cave as well. The community's going to be really, really pleased to have consultation on the changes around Maua Bone Cave, because they've been asking for a long time to be able to have pedestrian access back for safety of kids getting to school in that area. So that's going to be really, really good, really looking forward to that. The coastal pathway, especially the section from Trans Stop around onto actually Sumna Beach there, is essential work. There is currently no proper formed path, it is dangerous. The guardrails will be going in as part of the roadworks, but actually the pathway itself, and council has a previous resolution, poorly worded from about two years ago, that does ask to prioritise pedestrian access in areas that have been affected by the rockfall remediation works, and so really looking forward to getting that done in conjunction with the coastal pathway.
Very good. Pauline?
Sorry, a very quick question, you may not be able to answer it, but it doesn't matter, but the wheelie bin stocktake, so how do they do that? Do they do that from the bins that are out on the footpath? And my question really is, what about the bins that people have got, like, round the back? Is there any sort of, an amnesty programme or any encouragement for people just to ring up? I know someone that's got two, they only put one out, and they don't know what to do with the other one. So what do people do about that?
What we do is, we go in and we put a lot of information into a small area, and it's actually a separate crew that goes in and does that reconciliation, and then at the same time, we are checking each one of those bins, and we are registering them with a IRD number or whatever the number's called, and so a rapid read number, and so then they get registered then. If bins come out after that collection, they become an unknown bin, and we will then deal with that bin as they come out. We believe we've probably found about 15,000 bins that are in Romo location, maybe came out of red zone, people that have got multiple bins and so forth. So it's actually making a very good job, my understanding, they haven't done my area, but the understanding is that it's quite thorough and people are brought in to...
So I see what you're saying is, once your area comes up, then people get all the information they need about it. That's great.
A separate crew that goes in and identifies, and it's not done as part of the collection, it's a separate...
Yep, I see. Oh, thanks, Dave.
That's Glen Livingston.
Oh, thank you. Rubbish, yeah, just the bins in the Buick Pecos area, I mean, we lost two entire suburbs and big areas, that's a lot of bins. So I'd like to know what's happened to those bins, please, and also why we can't find a way of redistributing them where people reasonably need them. In special cases, I know we've got kind of contractual arrangements, which have to be strict, and there's questions over precedent setting, but I've run into several, I can think of a man in the chair who would need, he needs another yellow bin. He's the coach of a prominent sports person, for what that's worth, but he needs a special bin for his medical requirements, but there's no flexibility, and it frustrates the daylights out of me and a lot of people. Is there a way we can actually tackle this?
In council's rules, you can't get extra red bins, and potentially if he's got medical wastes that may need a red bin, it might be special waste, maybe rubbish that shouldn't go into our bins anyway if it's something. But you can get bigger green bins, and you can get bigger yellow bins. Admittedly, you pay for them, and we are working at the moment with waste management, because we do believe some people have a really nice garden, they want a bigger bin, and they have to pay for it. Well, maybe that's the wrong incentive and the amount, so we are looking at ways we structure the funding of additional capacity. Apparently, you can only get, at this point, one yellow bin per household, and some people, for whatever reason, want more than one yellow bin. And so we are looking at that with waste management, about how we structure the funding of those extra resources, because the more you can get into the recycling bin or the composting bin, the less we get in our red bin, which is our objective.
Very good. All right, so I'll, have we got a mover and a seconder?
Not yet.
Not yet. Moved by Pauline, seconded by Mike. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no, that's carried. Item number 26 is the nurses' chapel repair. So people will recall that I was somewhat surprised to find this had been moved in the, oh no, it's not that, it's item 25, isn't it?
No, 25.
They've put it in the, oh, I see. Okay, okay, they've changed the order. And, okay, so I was somewhat surprised, because we had announced that this was happening, I had announced this was happening, and it was a bit of a surprise to find that it wasn't. So I asked staff to do some work, and what they discovered was that, in fact, it had been incorrectly by error moved in the draft annual plan, and the error led to them taking the approach, a pragmatic approach, to approve in principle the correction and reinstatement, and that would save people making submissions on the annual plan, because there are some submissions who sort of basically are pointing out that I did announce that it was happening, and, you know, it's kind of, you know, I did say that I'd just get used to wearing an egg on my face, and that would be fine, but anyway, the trouble was, is that what it has identified, when I've done a bit more delving in it, it's not stated in the report, is that this is one of the examples of a programme of work which includes multiple projects in it, which enables budgets to change without going through a proper governance decision-making process. So I'm of the view that we should defer this paper until after we've heard the hearings, which means that it would go ahead with hearing the hearings, hearing the submissions that have been received on the subject. But it would enable us to make an administratively correct decision around the allocation of funding within these programmes. So when workers approved, the, because when this project was approved, it was part of the LTP, so it sat within a programme at $750,000. It has now gone to approximately $1.9 million with no governance decision around it, and that's the problem. So, sorry? Yeah?
What I don't understand about this, and I'm asking a question because we had a deputation from, who's over there, thank you, to ask about this issue to our community board, and I said, "Well, as far as I understood, the project was supposed to have been started." And I kind of, when I look at the press article, it says, "The council, which owns the building, will spend an estimated $1.8 million to fix, strengthen and restore it." This was in November. "The work is expected to start within weeks." So how could we go out and announce something's about start in weeks, and it didn't start?
But it did start in the sense that there's a lot of investigation work to be done, and as you can see from the report, the engineer has determined that a mortar and brick compaction test was required, and the timeline to obtain the results added six weeks to the project timeframe. So there was, there were some delays around the technical aspects, but I just saw Richie turn up in the room.
My phone problems, thanks.
Okay, well, if you come to the...
So I'm Darren Moses, and I'm running the Programme Facilities Rebuild. This is one of probably a good couple of hundred of projects that fit within that. So the interpretation of the word "work starting," the mayor's quite correct in that, from that point of the announcement on the lawn in November last year, work did start in detail. So we had a rough order, if you like, developed design, the get-go on that was that we could get going with detailed design, further complications were found, and we're at the point now where we are in a position where we could go out to contract for a builder to commence the work subject to funding.
That's great, but I mean, it said in here that we knew the finish time, so we must have done some design work to know when it would finish.
No, we knew that there was going to be an investigation first, because it is a tricky repair. I mean, it's not just a straightforward building, and so, and I said that in my speech when we announced it, that there would have to be some repair, some investigation, further investigation work. The investigation works themselves required a resource consent, so it was never going to be a straightforward process, and they did determine that further testing was required, that was not, well, it wasn't highlighted in the original... That was not, well, it wasn't highlighted in the original, the original approach.
So did we go back to the Memorial Chapel Trust to tell them what was going on?
So Richie, who wasn't, and I just said to stand outside for a minute, has been in touch with these guys on a regular basis. So, and I think there's some of those folk here today representing on path. I'll just make a comment. This is one of quite a number of successful projects that my team and Richie and his project managers have delivered over the last two or three years, following a similar approach, both in terms of investigative design, developed design, resource consenting and in construction. So it's the same team delivering a very similar product. And in this case, the further they've gone, the more they've found and hence the costs have increased. I'll just make a statement that whilst the costs have increased, I guess the beauty of this is that it is being managed as a programme of work and it has done over the last four years. So we've delivered all of the projects and facilities rebuilt to date to a bottom line. And I am, and I'll say it in a public arena, expecting to complete the project with a surplus against that. We've had overs and unders, so we've had some projects cost more based on the rough order costs that we submitted in the LTP. So at that time, they were rough order costs. Some we've delivered for better value, some we've gone over. But we're managing it on that overs and unders basis. And this is one where we've been comfortable that we do require a bit of additional funding. We've finished the sign of the Takahay and we've got a surplus there of a couple of hundred thousand dollars. So overs and unders, and look, I really am comfortable with that. We report through the capital governance group in terms of that process. And I believe my mandate was to deliver your projects to a bottom line of Programme P.
An interesting view. Yanni and then Aaron.
Like, the issue I have is I don't understand, we spent, I don't know how many hours and days talking to the community boards, about $500,000 across the city for their projects, for our budget. And yet we've got projects that are twice as much, you know, four times that amount, that just appear and seem to have no discussion, no reports. So, I mean, I really appreciate the work that the Facilities Rebuild team are doing. But I do think we need to understand at a governance level how exceptions can be made. We've also got this issue, I think, with some of the cycleway projects as well, where it's just not clear. Why would we even have a line item that we consult in our draft annual plan? If actually it doesn't matter what people say, the work can just get on and get done.
Hang on, Aaron's next and then Vicky.
Well, I mean, is it possible to kind of understand why we're putting these projects in our draft annual plan? If it actually doesn't matter how much money we've got on budget, it's only the programme that's really up for.
This one would have continued if it hadn't have been shifted in the budget. And, you know, as the report says, it was an administrative error that took it out. So it wasn't supposed to be taken out. It was already underway. And actually, it's, the only reason it hasn't proceeded to tendering to a contractor is because the funding hasn't been secured in the annual plan process yet. So the idea of the paper was to actually secure the funding for it so it could continue. I would be perfectly happy to proceed with that today as it's a decision in principle. The only thing that's been alerted to is the Programme of Work approach, which you have raised on a number of occasions, programmes of work not requiring any reference back to governance. And it doesn't, it doesn't feel right to me. And that's why, even though obviously I would prefer that this got brought, you know, that we confirm today that we are going to reinstate the budget for the repairs to the Nurses Memorial Chapel so that they can just get on with the job that they've already started. I would rather do that, but I honestly feel as, you know, with my responsibility, that having discovered that it hasn't been through the approval process that we've discussed as a governance group, I'd rather, you know, be open to putting it off as well.
Well, so, but what I thought we were going to get, and I raised this at the start of the draft annual plan. So the very first capital work programme that we got, I identified that this budget had doubled and said, why is that doubled? Can we get a report over what the issues are so that we know? Because it was very obvious from the first paper that we got that this had changed significantly. And I was told we would get a report, but we never get, we never got a report.
No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to buy that because what we were told was that it had already started. So getting a report as part of the process of the annual plan wasn't a decision to push it out.
We had a resolution to get a report on the financial options around the Nurses Memorial Chapel. It's a formal council resolution and it was before it was transferred.
No, that was years ago.
That was in 2014. That was an email from...
Sorry, that was years ago.
So just because we've got a resolution from years ago, suddenly means that we don't have to do it.
That resolution goes back to 2012?
The staff advice was in 2014.
No, 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 the staff.
That we would get a report. And I can send you that email again.
Yeah, no, no, I've got the email.
So, I mean, I want this project to happen, but I do think, like, with most of the heritage projects we've got, we have an option around how much we spend on versus repair versus deferred maintenance. We have options around what level of code we're going to. We haven't had any of that information on this project.
Yeah, and we've also not had, we've also not had information generally about priorities as against restor... Because, I mean, there'll be some councillors, there'll be some people in Christchurch who'd prefer that we put heritage on the back burner until some of the other things are repaired. So we're looking at a range of options around different models of delivery, different trusts that we could set up around certain buildings, some we can't because they're statutory. But, you know, I mean, we're trying to look at different ways as a city of getting these things done. But...
So I think one of the aspects, as Darren explained, is that the time that programmes are put in the LTP, they're put in with an approximate budget. Because we don't want to have done, spent a whole lot of money on detailed designs until we know they're going to get through, to get over that hurdle. Once in the programme, the council has given discretionary to the capital governance group to actually make those rigorous decisions about over and under. So it's not just left to Darren, he does actually report up to a governance group that actually look at, sort of, yeah. And it's always to the bottom line of the programme.
That's right.
And if there was ever a point that actually something was going to fall out of the programme, that would certainly come back to council. Because it's actually, here's a package of projects and you do it within, under this bottom line. And you manage your overs and unders as you get the detailed designs and projects.
Was it the end?
The one at the end has amazed, the greatest, we've missed out.
Sorry, I see the question. They may, they're prioritised as equals, if you like. So we're not, Nurses Chapel may appear on a list at the bottom, it's not. We're doing them as they come on stream, as they're doable, achievable. So they're all being delivered at once. We've got some that are still in design, some like the Takahay's now complete. They were all in the same sort of the mix altogether. And things move, as projects do, that some of them are easy to move through. Nurses Chapel has proven to be more complicated than we envisaged two years ago when we put the funding in. But they are equals and the commitment to me, from me, is that they will all be delivered because that was the commitment, whether they rebuilds or repairs.
Aaron?
Yeah, so I was more than happy to move this today because this is just a correction to something that was incorrectly deferred. And the reason why I was more than happy to do it, and so I'll ask you the question around that, is over timing, that this needs to be finished by next year. And it says August next year in here.
Yes.
My expectation is, well, and that's only eight weeks before the November 100-year anniversary of the end of the war, which is very important given the status of this chapel to not just this city, but the entire country.
Yes, agreed. And knowing that that was coming here today, that date has had a lot of attention in the last week with a commitment, that that is our commitment. So freeing up the funding, the team are in a position where we want to go out and solicit a tender for the builder to fix this building. We couldn't do that under Office of the Order to General guidelines in terms of we didn't have money in the bank to support the tender process. This will allow that process to take place and then hit that.
So if this is not corrected today, is there a chance we can miss that deadline?
Quite possibly, yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Jamie. Oh, sorry, Vicky was next.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Vicky, I won't, I won't take Vicky's.
The overs and unders, there have been quite a few in terms of heritage buildings. They're quite difficult to assess what's going to happen. But basically, there have been overs and unders all the way through, that have then been approved along the way. And the work's all being done from the same budget, basically.
Absolutely right. So there's a, if you like, there's a parent code that was approved. And then, if you like, the projects are siblings that they take off.
That fight over the park money.
Take off the required amount and at the end of the project, the surplus is put back to the parent until the next project's going in May. And in this case, to be fair with the heritage programme, this is probably the biggest deviation from the rough order cost of a couple of years ago that we've had. And as I say, the Takahay, we've just, I've just approved the change request, which will go up to David and the governance group for approval to return, as I say, a couple of hundred thousand dollars back into the heritage programme.
But the difficulty with heritage buildings is you don't know all of the details until you do the exploratory work.
That's exactly right.
So you're always going to get that over and under. That's why I'm not seeing the problem hugely. I'll try and restate it, so... No, I know what yours to think it is. Yeah, but I think that, I mean, the difficult thing for me is that, you know, under the local government act, it seems like we have delegated to staff a really high level of decision-making around options, around repair, timing, priorities within a programme. And that, to me, wasn't as crystal clear as it is with this, this decision. But given where it's up to and given the importance of it in terms of the centenary commemorations, I just think that, I mean, I'm perfectly comfortable with passing this resolution and getting the contractor to complete the work. I'm really comfortable with that. But what I'm not comfortable with is saying that that's going, that the mechanism for spending these vast sums of monies within programmes is necessarily right. And maybe that's what we need to get a report back on so that we can actually consider it. But it's not just your programme of work, it's actually other programmes of work. I think there's 60 to 70 programmes where significant sums of money are located. And I think that we need to have, because I keep saying, just because it's on budget, it's not a governance decision to commence the work. You know, we are required to, you know, be guardians of the ratepayers' contribution to these things. We may have got some insurance, but certainly it's not, insurance isn't paying for the total amount of these restorations. But anyway, Jamie.
Yeah, it kind of carries on with this under an overs theme. I completely understand this. And I guess at the end of the day, it all comes out in the wash. Can, why can't we do, can't we do that with this? With the overs and unders, we've known this, this has been, you know, since, oh, the dawn of our facilities rebuild. There have constantly been overs and unders and we've reached into other jam jars to be able to top other things up. How much, with our surplus there, what's the additional amount that we would?
No, it's not. It's only been moved, it's been moved in the budget by accident. And we need to bring it forward for it to continue. So we can open it in 2018.
So is it, it's actually simply, so it's just simply that due to the administrative error, the funding that was in this current year is now in the next year?
Correct.
Okay, well, the issue that I've then got with it, so that's even simpler again, probably clarifies my position even more. The most important thing is that you do what you say you're going to do. We've said that we're going to do it. I can't see how there is any other option but to not progress with this. It's not a tremendous amount of money. There are unders in other areas and we've started it. And we just have to finish it. I can't see, maybe I'm missing what the debate is then around it because it seems like, like there's no other option. I don't know, I don't know what you're grappling with.
The only reason that I'm raising it is because there was not a governance decision to proceed with it, as I thought there was. And... Shall we make that now?
Well, yeah, I can help you out there.
The thing is, is that we, the thing is, is that we don't have a paper. And that's my thing, is that we don't have a paper. You know, when we, when we do major projects, we have a paper that sets out all of the background, all of the details. I mean, there was a land swap involved here. This came over to the council ownership. It was a decision made by the council back in 2013 before I was elected as the mayor, so it dates back quite considerably. It was implemented by ordering council in 2014, so that was when I was the mayor. And it was in relation to a whole land swapping around the development of the hospital. But the agreement had already been made that we would take it over. There's a whole question around insurance, which is not included in this report. There was a whole question around a number of other elements of the, of the whole process. So nothing's transparent around it. So I would like to see a transparent report that details all of the background and all of the processes and everything. And I thought we had done that when I announced it.
That doesn't need to be mutually exclusive though too, does it, then, to the in-principle recommendation?
No.
So I think we could still make an in-principle recommendation, which I think gives the comfort that they actually deserve?
I'd be really happy for that because I want it brought forward so that they, brought back into the budget where it was. And, but I also want us to set up a good decision-making process for future decisions. Because it cannot be that a sum of money placed on the budget is sufficient for a governance decision for the work, for the repair or the build to happen. To me, that's not good governance. Phil, Sarah and Glen.
So I'm certainly happy to support this in principle to get this dealt with today. I'm just really going to ask Darren about, say, reporting to the Social Community Development Committee. Because, and just so councils know, my understanding is we had agreed to have quarterly reporting back to the committee. That was so that in fact staff like Darren could get on and do the work and get it progressed. And, but I'm just checking with Darren as to when, say, the next report to the committee and council might be approximately, Darren?
Timely. So historically, for the last term of council, we came through the CHED committee on a monthly basis on all of these projects, little one pager, here's where we're at, here's what we're doing. So we had a monthly governance there. We agreed that for this term, there's a lot of business to get through and talk to Mary, who chairs that committee. We come quarterly and we're coming to see the committee on the 31st of May. And the report is going up for authorisation today. So it'll be all of these projects, bit of an update and for information only.
How much is in the budget total?
Total, the...
The park programme?
Uh, it'll be 55, I think it is, off the top of my head. Sorry, I can provide that.
55 million dollars.
Yeah, I think so.
Yep, okay. So I've got Sarah, Glen, Yanni.
I mean, I think that this is worth discussing because it's, the process is used at a whole range of different levels with different types of programmes. And completely understand that this is a very special building, it's heritage, it's high status, needs to happen. But where do we, we need to have a discussion about where we draw the line. So there's other, other projects that have been in the long-term plan that work had started on, that we decided as a council to put off in the draft annual plan. So recommendations came through and they pushed projects out that had already started on consultation and those kind of things. There were programmes of work, so happened to be thinking about Scarborough Playground, consultation had started. So we are, we have to work out where in a programme, what sort of value, what sort of status of work do we want oversight on and where are we happy to delegate all of that decision-making on what projects are priorities to staff? And I think we need to have that discussion because that's one I'd like to see brought forward.
Question really, just over the timing and the committee's structure. I noticed that announcement was a month after the last election and we didn't have our committees in place by then. So, you know, I really appreciate all your reporting, Darren, in the previous term. It was monthly, we had a consistent, ongoing conversation over a whole range of heritage and other community facilities. Just wondered whether that lack of structure had a bearing on things or...
No, not at all. I think my take was that there was...
I think my take was that there was a fair degree of comfort, I think possibly, that things were ticking along quite nicely. The projects all spawn their own micro world of community consultation and engagement and what have you and that those issues would come up. So we weren't really bringing any significant issues back to that committee, so we felt that quarterly would be a regular pace. We've had a lot achieved in the last six months towards summer, as you know, with opening a number of community centres and facilities and heritage buildings and Mona Vale. So we're back into more of a steady-as-you-go, so we think quarterly will just provide that degree of comfort that we're on track. We're targeting having the entire programme complete towards about Christmas next year, that's just about everything done, new builds, repairs, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you. So one question that I've put forward is how much of this budget is for the repair versus the sort of deferred maintenance that the CDHB may have not done? So do we have any idea of that?
I'm going to, Richie will have the exact number, but I would say it's probably a split in order of, it's probably five per cent of it would be sort of what you call maintenance issues, bearing in mind that this building has sat, what are we up to, six years probably now? So it's had some temporary strengthening done, there'll be water ingress and all sorts of bits and pieces, but I'm happy to provide in writing what that exact split would be.
And then the other question, and I'll get into the base, but I just wanted to check, if we approved this today but then had a report come back at the next council meeting in two weeks with the kind of outline of, here's the scope of the repairs, here's the kind of little other things that the mayor was talking about before, would that be okay? Is that something that we could possibly get so that we can actually make a conscious decision to sign off on agreeing to this work?
Just, so can you just re-pitch the question?
So like, there were a number of issues that the mayor raised around the context of this, you know, it was how it was acquired by council, what the financial issues have been in the past, what the options are in terms of repair methodologies, timeframes, et cetera. Like, you know, when we got the sign of the Takahe building, which was referred to, we got a report that said, you know, here's to the percentage of code that we want to fix it to, here's how much it'll cost, here's the kind of proposed methodology. We haven't had any of that for this, so I just wondered if, you know, if we agreed in principle today around the end statement and the planned budget, but also got that report that actually signed off as a council to say, we're happy for this project to go ahead.
And just a couple of comments here, certainly can bring more information back, absolutely no problem. The, I guess that was the transition because we were bringing projects on a project-by-project basis to this council and it was getting probably a little bit frustrating on both sides possibly. And we agreed that we'll move away from having that project-by-project-by-project approval into more of a, what do we need to fix and how much do we need? So I'm not sure, certainly with the Nurses Chapel, absolutely, that information is at hand and I'm sure we could have that information to you very quickly. My slice of that pie is essentially the project management building side of it, the legacy issues relating to land transfer and, I mean, Andrew owns this asset as the internal customer at the end of the day here. It's a council asset, but he's our internal client, so Andrew can talk to that stuff. I can talk to the what are we doing, how are we fixing it and what's it costing? So we absolutely could bring that information to you, not a problem at all.
Are we in debate now or...
No, look, I think that, oh, yeah, Dion?
Actually, my question just answered that.
Okay. Because the question, I guess the question that I've got is that, it's, I mean, it's kind of related to what Yanni's just said, that there's almost no point of approving it in principle if you're going to then expect that the council make a decision. I think that it's probably better that we approve it in principle, but then we ask for staff to prepare a report on the capital programmes as well. I mean, I don't recall us being so explicit about the nature of the projects that went into programmes. I was shocked the other day to find out that there are sixty to seventy programmes, that was a surprise in terms of the number. What does your, what does this programme cover?
Facilities rebuild programme is a singular programme, basically covers the, so it's suburban facilities, it's what I'd loosely call community facilities, so representing for the most part Mary's assets, for want of a better term, so libraries, pools, libraries, pools, toilets. Andrew looks after the heritage assets, so libraries, pools, toilets, sports fields, pavilions, the things where people congregate in the communities, have fun activities. We've done Waltham Pool, we rebuilt the Norman Kirk Pool, we've built community centres in Heathcote and Red Cliffs Library, we're doing Bishopdale and Sumner Library. So it covers quite literally hundreds of assets across the city.
But some of them do come to us for approval?
Not in recent times, they did early in the piece, they were coming on a, so we had to, we used to have to work up quite a detailed case with a cost and come and seek approval and that was happening on a, it was quite a bit of churn involved in that, which is why we discussed the notion, if you like, of calling it a programme. We worked through with community boards, what are the priorities, what, we can only fix so much initially, what will we fix? Lists were agreed and off we went, so...
And how did heritage fit into that?
Because they're all EQ proj...
Yeah, I'm essentially, I'm the council's earthquake PMO, so instead of Fletcher's fixing houses, I'm fixing the citizens' assets and that's what we do. And heritage are part of those assets, whether they be the Takahe, the Mona Vale, Craig Croft Community Centre, et cetera, et cetera. It's great work, it's rewarding work and it's the work we're trying to complete, really.
So it's not the new projects that fit in those programmes, do they?
Well, we are building, so we're building new things to replace earthquake damage. So Sumner's getting rebuilt because we lost that entire asset, we rebuilt the Red Cliffs Library because the other one was a complete write-off.
But they're not completely new things, they're all related to EQ work?
Yeah, nothing growth-related, nothing, so it's just the EQ work, yeah. And I also run the housing programme as well, where we were fixing social housing as well. So it's, you're absolutely right, to be crystal clear, it's the EQ-related fix-it-find-it project.
That's the bottom line, that's the bottom line.
What's wrong with getting, Yanni wanted a report, which I think is a good idea. I slightly disagree that that sends a signal or that there's no point in doing it because it says that we're probably going to approve it anyway. Yes, that's exactly the point, we probably are. That's why we've said in 1A, hopefully, that in principle, we plan to fix that administrative error. So I think that's really the question, is do you or do you not want to proceed with what we said that we'd do and what we were doing? For me, that answer is yes. If the answer is no for some people, I think that's fine, they can vote against it, but I think we need to make that call and ask that question.
Yeah, no, that's true, but if the second one is to produce a report...
Probably to coincide with the annual plan and that's fine.
But if that is to approve it, then what's the point of approving it in principle?
Because it gives you what you wanted with the transparency and bringing up all of the issues that we discussed, which I think are completely valid and they probably have fallen by the wayside, so we can correct that, we can get what those options are, as long as the figures aren't changing, I'm fine with that. We've said that we'll do it, I'm happy to continue doing that, but I think that, I don't necessarily think that we're losing anything.
Well, as long as the people that support the resolution today are committed to supporting the restoration.
Well, I think Ian would probably say that we couldn't do that, but I'd say that it's highly unlikely that we wouldn't, it wouldn't make a lot of sense, though we keep an open mind.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, that's, we've set expectations, that's what a long-term plan is, you know...
No, I understand that, I understand that.
Yes, we can change our mind, but I think it would be unlikely and the question now is, you know, do you want to progress with it? For me, I think yes and I think we can have that report and I think that can highlight a lot of the issues that you've raised, which are valid. And I think that if 1A passed, then I think there would be, or B, which then called for a report today, I think it would be unlikely that it wouldn't pass when it came to us.
Request staff to prepare a report on this programme, on the Facilities Rebuild Programme in terms of how it operates and the nature of the projects within the programme.
And maybe where we're at financially, if it's...
Yes, yes, and also a specific report on the Nurses Chapel, which includes the history. Because I think that, I think that there has been an unwillingness to commit some stuff to writing because the original decision was taken in PX. And, I mean, as I say, it was before I was mayor and I can see no reason now for that original decision to remain in PX because the ordering council's been passed and both the Canterbury DHB and the council have settled their insurance on a global basis. So I think, I don't actually think there's anything left that needs to be in PX, so a report could actually cover off all of those issues as well. And the nature of the projects, rather than programme, nature of the projects.
Within the programme.
Yeah, and with, within the programme and with a specific detailed report on the Nurses Chapel. And that's probably a good discipline anyway.
I think that would be really good because you've got a number of other projects like Waltham, Red Cliffs, that have had reports to council and have had governance sign-off on scope, design. And particularly for the Nurses Memorial Chapel, there is actually a formal council resolution and formal council staff advice that a report would come back to us. So I think that protects us from the audit office if we do actually get that report back. But all we're talking about in terms of one is fixing the administrative error in the draft annual plan in terms of the timing. And there's a number of other projects that have actually been deferred or been brought forward around different years. So actually, that number one is almost irrelevant if you've got flexibility within your programme to move money from year to year to fix what you need to fix. And that's, I think, that we do need to get answered under two.
That programme is phased across another few years, so moving more into the first year will have a rate impact, as the report identified?
Yeah, I understand that, but also we've told that there's unders and overs and some things are coming in under budget, which we don't have any idea what the rates impact of that is. So, yeah. So I would welcome these additional resolutions.
Okay, so would someone like to move this? Aaron, seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? I'll put the motion.
Who would show us the unders and overs sort of balance?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can have that resolution.
Yep.
Well, absolutely, we had some...
It's just accumulating a whole bunch of information I've already got into a palatable report. Yep, yep, yep.
The only question is then just timing around that report, do we do it to coincide with annual plan or is it even, is that sort of implicit in that?
Yeah.
There's no point in...
Yeah, I mean, the bigger picture stuff around programmes versus projects, that's the LTP. So this report now, you know, for the annual plan, all right?
Just to be clear, an expectation when that is exactly that I need it? We were just saying, you know, I guess...
Before we sign off on the, before we sign off, so it'd have to be June?
Second June, early June.
Early June?
That's doable, though, isn't it?
But this is good because this will send a signal to people who are quietly waiting for a signal that we don't need to worry about it in terms of the annual plan. All right, I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no. It's carried. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, it's 113, it'd be quite good...
Thirty minutes are the time.
Yeah, I'd quite like to get this part finished.
So 27 will be fast, 27 will be fast?
Twenty-seven will be fast, so can we move to item 27?
Move, Tim, to move.
Tim moved, seconded Andrew, I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. Back to item 27, 25, which is the Urban Development Authorities. There was, hi, there was a concern, if you just go to the, to the front bit, so the conclusion. Finally, the council was reluctant to support the autonomy of UDA's to undertake certain work such as reclassify, exchange or revoke reserves without appropriate, and we would like the words, delegations and safeguards, without appropriate delegations and safeguards. Because we felt that we should be explicit about the nature of the safeguard. This is on page 252. Oh, sorry, it's probably not, you've probably even got the entire agenda on you. You see it just above the conclusion, the line just above, so without appropriate delegations and safeguards. And the point was, was just to make it clear that we could delegate that authority as a council. Yep. Okay, move by, oh, oh. Yep, Andrew?
I'd actually like to go one step further than that if we can, rather than saying is reluctant to, say council would not support without appropriate delegations and safeguards.
Okay.
Just strengthens it a little bit. I did have a couple of other questions or comments as well, which were, paragraph one, the introduction, the council generally supports any submission made by the UDS and DCL. It becomes very difficult to do that, having not seen those submissions. I mean, I wonder whether we actually need to say that or whether we could just take that out and say that we note the UDS partnership and DCL may provide their own separate submissions on the discussion document, this submission's not intended to replace or detract from either of those. I'm uncomfortable saying we support something that we haven't seen. Yep. And then the word, so paragraph two, general submission points, there could be potential merit in exploring the lessons learnt from the specific post-earthquake Christchurch legislation. There could be potential, it's a little bit weak. We may want to say, we believe there is merit in, just makes it a little bit less subjunctive.
Not the CER Act, though I wouldn't use that as an example of anything good. Sorry. Just saying.
And I think I have one more point.
So the GCR, Greater Christchurch Regeneration Act, yeah, that there could be merit in exploring, or there would be merit in exploring the lessons learned from the specific post-recovery legislation such as the Greater Christchurch Regeneration Act. Sorry, I missed the SIR Act in there.
I mean, the purpose of putting it in the SIR Act is that there wasn't learning from that, so that's the reason for including reference to it, so yes, and I also did.
What were the lessons learned from the SIR Act?
How long have you got? Have you got all day?
The government would recognise too.
We'd need a conference for that, surely?
I'd choose not.
I think we'd need a symposium for that.
We can certainly remove that if that's...
Pauline?
This is clarification, you might be able to help me out, but, so the purpose of this is about using special enabling powers that are outside of normal legislative processes. And just quoting from the mayor's report today, that's noted by the UDSIC, that when proposing to use the Regeneration Act, it's necessary to satisfy the provisions of the Act to justify using the legislation. So are we strong enough in being assured that there will be method and criteria to justify using this? So it doesn't become like a thin end of the wedge type scenario?
I think there's probably a couple of points to note. With the GCR Act, council may choose not to use any legislation that may come out of this discussion document over the next three or four years while we've got something else in place, so that wouldn't be surprising. But we think if they were to pick up on all the matters that we've raised in our submission, which are recently detailed, then... which are recently detailed, then we'd be pretty comfortable with what has been proposed.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I guess I just wondered how pertinent this really was for us. Is this really about Auckland? I mean, given that it's about infrastructure provision and land supply, of which we have plenty in the latter, so I guess we're taking a principled stance today. Would that be more our position?
I think there are other places outside of Auckland that could be applied nationally. Queenstown is one that comes to mind. It's not just for areas where they've got land supply issues, but that's one of the examples that the discussion document refers to. But again, with us, we are in a reasonably unique situation in comparison with the rest of the country, given we've got legislation in place. So this is just an opportunity that would avail itself to us, and we may choose not to use it, particularly for the next three or four years, while we have other legislation in place and other organisations which are already playing in that space. But there's a good chance if the legislation does go ahead, it will certainly take some time within which to enact, and by the time it is, it might be something that this council chooses to use it, to use. So it's certainly for fragmented land, land which is problematic to develop, it is something which could come in pretty handy in the future.
All right. Phil?
Just, look, thanks for all the work on it, Ivan. And like, it just seems to me that you have attempted to strike a balance in terms of the usefulness of this, and Corla, I think your recommendation too is that it be urban development partnership, and things like that make sense. But just earlier on, in terms of some of the proposals, it just seems to me they, it was pretty clearly would have take, would potentially take away a lot of democracy from any territory authority. And that's what you've also commented on, I think, quite strongly.
Yeah, potentially, and the actual detail will be in the draft legislation, but we want to signal at this stage that the, that has to be a community, you know, the community has to be involved at the start. And it needs to be a partnership with the community as well, as well as with the government. And we think there are improvements that could be made, well, in the legislation, there could be improvements that could be made to the proposals that would give a better assurance to that. And that's, yeah, that's what the submission's trying to get across.
And one example, that would be the council having the right to veto any...
Oh, that's essential.
Absolutely essential. All right. Would someone like to move this? Nobody. Phil, seconded Sarah. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. I would now like to move that. We, so we resolved to exclude the public for all the reasons set out on pages 6, 269 to 270 of the agenda, and pages five to six of the supplementary agenda, and that Kate Kearney, CEO of Autatahi, Community Housing Trust, and Paul Monroe, CEO of CCHL, remain after the public have been excluded for the particular item on the agenda for which they have knowledge that is relevant to the item or assists the council. I'll move that, seconded by Andrew. Oh, you can't, no, 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 you can't. Phil, Phil, seconded by Phil, and I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that is carried. Thank you. We are in PX, and shall we come back?